That's awesome. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We are going to have a moment of reflection, and this evening our invocation will be from Reverend Dr. Patricia Freeman, Pastor of St. Philip African Methodist Episcopal Church at 8:15 North 8th Street, Wilmington, North Carolina. So if everyone could please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, everyone. Let us come on to the Lord in His time. Loving and gracious God, we are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we are thankful for all your blessings and for the success of the outcome of this school board meeting. We ask that you bless this board, and may they continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with them in their deliberations and help them to be wise in their decisions for the good of all those who have placed their trust, their confidence, and their leadership. Give them the insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help them to make decisions that are for the good of all. We thank you, God, for granting this prayer and the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In the glory of your Son Jesus' name we pray, amen. May the Lord bless your meeting, and may it be productive in all that you do and say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Freeman. All right, please remain standing. We're with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And thank you again, Dr. Freeman, for being here with us and sharing those words. All right, Ms. Bowie, would you please do the roll call?
Good evening. Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Boyer.
Here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
He McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And Peter Wildebohr.
Present.
Thank you very much. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Yes, ma'am?
To approve.
Oh, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Any discussion?
Do we need to amend?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to amend the agenda to have the policy 4300 moved to second reading. It was on for first reading last month.
And thank you for bringing them up, Mr. Boyer. That was my mistake. I should have caught that in the agenda review. It was meant for second reading, not first reading. So the motion is to amend the agenda to move 4300 to second reading, not first. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill. All right. All those in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11a, 1a, 3, and 1/6, to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 115(c)(319) and (321), to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including in the case captioned John Doe versus New Hanover County Board of Education et al., New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 17-CVS-2745, and Jane Doe versus New Hanover County Board of Education et al., New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 20-CVS-1395, and to maintain the confidentiality of student records under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC1232G. Is there a motion?
Move for closed session pursuant to the statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in closed session.
We are back. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. These were regular meeting, or excuse me, January special board meeting minutes from January 13th, and the February regular board meeting minutes from February 2nd. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowyer. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, hold on, let me back that up. Is there any discussion? Did any of our speakers' names were spelled wrong in the minutes? Ms. Barnhart's name was spelled wrong. Ms. Bowie, can you correct that, please? I don't know if it's a big issue or not, but some people would like to have their names spelled right. Sure. Ms. Bowie, if you could just make a note of that. Thanks. Any other discussion? Alright, so is there a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes with the exception of correcting Ms. Barnhart's name? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of achievement. And I believe we are welcoming Ms. Chris Clegg to the microphone. Good evening, Ms. Clegg.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board of Education. It is a pleasure tonight to be able to bring you the recognition of achievements. We will be starting off with Trask Middle School as our school showcase, followed by recognitions from our NHCS Rookie of the Year, Abby Emerson, at Carolina Beach Elementary School. We will then be congratulating our women's and men's lacrosse, I'm sorry, cross-country runners at Hoggart High School this evening. We will also like to recognize Dr. Stephanie Willis at Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, followed by recognizing our New Hanover County Schools teachers who have earned their National Board certifications. So, thank you and enjoy the video.
Thank you very much. Wonderful video. Thank you very much, Trask Middle School.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of the New Hanover County Board of Education. I am here this evening with our March 2nd Board recognitions. First up, we would like to recognize our 2021 NHCS Rookie of the Year. New Hanover County Schools, in collaboration with the Wilmington Rotary Club, held the annual Rookie of the Year Celebration at Carolina Beach Elementary School to recognize first grade teacher Abby Emerson. Congratulations to Abby Emerson for being named our 2021 New Hanover County Schools Rookie of the Year. Next up, we would like to congratulate the cross-country teams at John T. Hoggart High School. Congratulations to the Vikings cross-country runners. The Viking ladies are back-to-back cross-country state 4A champions. Job well done. The women's team is coached by Coach Rhonda Shaloski. Teammates are Sloan Fleming-Hickey, Shay Hopfacker, Erin Johnson, Savannah Moore, Molly Parker, Paige Phillips, and Ashley Summers. Alternate Annie Mulligan. Congratulations again, ladies. Additionally, we would like to congratulate the men's cross-country team at Hoggart. They are state 4A runners-up. The team is coached by Coach Billy Mason. Congratulations to all of these dedicated student athletes. Our next recognition comes from Snipes Academy of Arts and Designs. Congratulations to Dr. Stephanie Willis. Dr. Willis is officially a Doctor of Education, earning her degree from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington this past winter. Congratulations, Dr. Willis, way to lead the way. Her final recognitions of the evening will be for our New Hanover County Schools teachers who have achieved National Board certification, or who have renewed their National Board certification. This year, we have 13 New Hanover County School educators who have achieved National Board certification. Congratulations to them all. From Hoggart High School, Jennifer Costin. Additionally, from Hoggart High School, Blair Dean. From Ashley High School, Margaret Gambino. From New Hanover High School, Chad Goins. From Forest Hills Global Elementary School, Amanda Hope. From Bradley Creek Elementary School, Kristen Kelly. From Mary C. Williams Elementary School, Megan Marcey. From Wrightsville Beach Elementary School, Lynn McGary. From New Hanover High School, Abby Lynn Nobles. From Wrightsville Beach Elementary, Sandra Roberts. From Pine Valley Elementary School, Julia Snodgrass. From Ashley High School, Lauren Thompson. And from Parsley Elementary School, Christopher Walters. Congratulations to all these educators on their National Boards. We would like to congratulate all our Board recognitions. We are incredibly proud of the work they are doing and their initiative to lead the way in our district. Please give these educators and students a round of applause.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is our call to the audience. Our call to the audience, each speaker is allowed three minutes. And so I will be calling your name. When your name is called, please come up to the microphone and please share your thoughts and comments with the Board. First up, we have Ms. Deborah Maxwell.
Dr. Faust, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. I am here today to request again what my predecessor, Mr. Harold Beatty, did with your predecessors, and to seek justice for the children of New Hanover County by working together to end elementary school suspensions, which disproportionately impact children of color. Addressing this is critical to dismantling the systemic racism that the Board has spoken out against. It is my sincere hope that this Board can agree now to address this inequity. In order to accomplish this, it is necessary for the principals to have the support of central office, and for the teachers to have the appropriate training and tools, and his or her toolkit. Only then, when this is provided, can we as a school system provide genuine equity for all students. Which includes, at the end, the mission of the New Hanover County Schools, in collaboration with our parents and the community, is to strive to provide all children with an opportunity for superior education in a safe and positive learning environment where they are prepared with skills to succeed. Thank you, Board members, Dr. Faust, and Board Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Mr. George Plasse.
Members of the Board and Dr. Faust. I'm here today to speak you as the Vice President and Education Chair of the New Hanover County Branch of the NAACP. But I'm also here to, I'm sorry, I can't. And they're gonna fog up, but I'll just try. As a lifelong educator, who has fought for equity and excellence in education throughout my 57-year career. Today, we are asking the Board to eliminate one policy that is a major deterrent to both equity and excellence in our schools. The elimination of the use of suspensions is a racial justice issue. It is also good educational policy. Put simply, suspensions are not the solution, they're the problem. Since we began this campaign, I have heard from a number, I've heard a number of objections. Objection number one, teachers need suspensions in order to maintain control in the classroom. The problem with this argument is that suspensions don't work, so using them does not contribute to better classroom management. I have to wonder, was the same objection raised when the school system eliminated corporal punishment? Probably. Objection number two, no other school districts in North Carolina have eliminated suspensions in the elementary grades. Well, technically true, Charlotte Mecklenburg has recently moved in that direction. But more to the point, when our Board adopted the inter-agency agreement several years ago, we were the first to do so. Since then, many other districts have followed our lead. Objection number three, we'd love to do it, but we don't have the resources to utilize the alternatives to suspension. The problem is that we will never have the resources until you prioritize making this change. When, when the decision was made to have SROs in the schools, did someone say, "Can't do that, don't have the resources"? No, they found the resources. Objection four, it will take time to put everything in place in order to implement the policy change like this. No doubt, it will. But unless the process is put in motion now, this simply becomes an excuse for kicking the can down the road. So, we have modified our ask. We ask to change the policy in the lower grades, pre-K through 3, effective at the beginning of the fall of 2021. Work on training and securing resources for teachers and administrators during the following year, so that the policy can be extended to grades 4 and 5, beginning in the fall of 2022. Change is never easy, but unless you address this now, you will be condemning another generation of students, particularly students of color, to a system which has shown conclusively to lead to the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm certain you do not want to do that. I have a petition with signatures, where should I leave it?
Ms. Bowie, please, right there on the corner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shaloski.
Next up, Ms. Meben Void.
Good evening, Dr. Faust, members of the Board of Education. On behalf of the New Hanover Resiliency Task Force, I speak to support the NAACP's petition to end suspensions for children 5th grade and under. The goals of the task force are, one, prevent ACEs, adverse childhood experiences and adverse community environments. Two, respond to existing trauma with knowledge, empathy, and compassion. And three, create opportunities to form meaningful, healthy connections. The request from the New Hanover NAACP does all of these. Many students who have been away from the physical school environment due to COVID will arrive with significant need, some having experienced untold trauma during the past 12 months. The safety net of schoolteachers and counselors has been much farther away, and some are likely to show negative behaviors, and in some cases, violent outbursts, when they return in person full-time. This can be normal neurological reactions to trauma. Science tells us that what these students need more than anything is to feel loved and accepted, safe and competent. Pushing them away by suspending them does not accomplish this. In fact, it causes the opposite, fueling feelings of rejection and increasing the behaviors we don't want to see. Yet, we also know that interacting with students with such high needs is taxing and traumatic for teachers from whom we are asking too much already. We would like to see the suspension policy change, but also partner with the schools to support teachers, providing them with good alternatives to suspension. Additional supports are needed also for families, parents, and school administrators to ensure that classrooms can be safe for everyone. For example, securing additional social workers for high-need schools was something we proposed to the Board over a year ago, when redistricting continued to leave some schools with disproportionate numbers of children living in poverty. We do want to commend the strong efforts being made by the New Hanover County Schools Student Support Services Team through implementation of Second Step Curriculum, Sanford Harmony Curriculum, and tireless efforts by several trauma-sensitive schools pilots. Thank you for your consideration of both this proposed policy and increased supports for teachers and staff to handle the trauma that walks through the doors every day, so students don't have to feel banished or rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Floyd.
Mr. Peter Rowich.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to talk about systemic racism. On May 25th, 2020, George Floyd was murdered on a street in Minneapolis. His death was followed by mass demonstrations in the streets across the country, including Wilmington. Less than a month later, the New Hanover County School District released a statement on ending systemic racism, which can be found on the District's website. It says that the District worked for two years to identify disparities- It says that the district worked for two years to identify disparities and gaps within our education system and had undertaken the task of creating equitable educational practices within our schools. However, based on the 2018-2019 Racial Equity Report Card from the Southern Coalition of Racial Justice, black students were 7.9 times more likely to be suspended from school than white students, a stark and unjustifiable disparity. Black students make up 18% of the student body, but experienced 59% of the suspensions. The district's statement on ending systemic racism goes on to say that its policies, procedures, and overall environment of schools will reflect its commitment to ensure that we celebrate our diverse community by cultivating an environment that embraces inclusion, provides equitable opportunities, and affirms our humanity. You have an opportunity tonight to end this disparity, affirm our common humanity, and extinguish this ember of systemic racism. We're calling upon you tonight to cast your votes to end the use of disciplinary suspensions in our pre-K and elementary schools. This first step will be a concrete demonstration of your commitment to end disparate treatment of our children on the basis of race. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowich. Ms. Veronica McLauren Brown.
Good evening, Dr. Faust and board members. I'm, I have 34 years of experience as an educator in New Hanover County Schools. My career in New Hanover County began at Roland Grice in 1973. My African-American colleagues and I chatted about excessive suspensions of black students and systemic racism almost every day. Around 3:05, five days a week, you heard the names of mostly African-American boys being called to the office for suspension letters. And today, 2021, a third generation of African-American children is suffering the negative consequences of out-of-school suspensions. I'm naming it now, student abuse. Why? Because research informs us of the large negative impact of suspensions on students. Poor attendance, dropping out of school, less likely to pass class and state assignments, state assessments, the school-to-prison pipeline. There are many alternatives to out-of-school suspensions that teach and heal students rather than abuse them. Peer mediation, restorative justice, instruction in conflict resolution, contracts, home visits, counseling. These alternatives, plus many others, were accessible to educators when I retired almost a decade and a half ago. A paradigm shift is needed to eliminate the culture in our school system and the county that embraces and promotes out-of-school suspensions. The time is now for the school system to train all of our educators in the methods that support students rather than punish them. The time is now for educators to acquire the knowledge and skills to successfully implement alternatives to suspensions. The time is now for a non-negotiable zero-tolerance policy for all the adults to master the pedagogical skills of our profession and demonstrate excellence in our school system. Stop the student abuse. End the oppressive practice of student suspensions in our school system and our county, a policy that has its roots in a culture of historical and systemic racism. Suspensions are like the knee on the necks of our children, suffocating them, killing their hopes and opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Helen Goss. Did she leave? Okay, so then how about Ms. Amanda White? I know that you swapped out your spot for hers, so.
And we were going to have Ms. Helen Goss speak, and so hopefully she'll be able to speak at the next board meeting to talk to y'all. And hopefully we can get her, she's the first person to speak. But I did want to speak to y'all today as the president of the New Hanover County Association. We formally officially endorsed the NAACP New Hanover Chapter's petition. So we would like to give our two cents on how we can help the district get teachers training. But I did actually want to present to y'all a couple things. One of them being a book. But I think everybody in this room can acknowledge that suspensions disproportionately affect black students in New Hanover County. And if you review very public suspension data, you'll see in 2018-19 year, 59% of 2,000, over 2,900 suspensions were of black students. In this year of the 45 suspensions, 57% of them have been of black students. So even in a pandemic, these stats don't change. Reducing suspensions will probably not result in equalizing suspensions because of the implicit bias that still remains in our system. But suspensions, because suspensions are a systematic issue, a systemic issue, that needs to be corrected through policy, so it can be prioritized through training and implementation. And as an educator who speaks with many educators and administrators, I can confidently say that this issue can be fixed, even though it will be hard, but it will have positive effects on all students. So with that, I want to quickly introduce a book called Hood Feminism. And I think if we better understand the students and the cultures that come into our schools, we can better understand the students themselves and work with them on, in disciplinary ways that will get them to, really us to be able to reach them and grow them in the classroom without removing them. So I want to share with you a couple of quotes from Mickey Kendall. "The most common form of teacher discrimination manifests in classroom expectations and disciplinary referrals." So this sort of sounds like implicit bias. Do you agree? Another quote, "Whatever you may think of kids you see on those videos of misconduct in school, you should ask, why are they loud? Why are they angry? And where is their safe space?" And finally, when you are forced out of a class or having just even the wrong color on your shoes, and the adults around you teach you that they value your obedience over your education, and if they don't value you or your future, then why should you? So my two cents is if you're going to pass this policy as is, then you're not really doing anything to contribute to the systemic issue. But if you will add what the NAACP of the New Hanover County Chapter is wanting you to add, I think that that will be a step in the right direction and educators will adapt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Hazel Isles.
Good evening. You may or may not remember me. My name is Hazel Isles, and I spoke here about, I spoke here about last year asking you to keep us safe. I'm asking you again to keep us safe. I am now 13 years old, and yes, COVID is hard. It is not the worst thing I've experienced or will experience. I miss my friends, but I have found ways to connect with them. It sucks that I, that I can't be with them, but I have learned to overcome that disappointment. Many people are saying that we are depressed and are having trouble with our mental health. That is true, but we were struggling before COVID. Many of my peers struggle with this, but our school is not addressing these issues. And it makes us feel like outcasts and that there's something wrong with us. The programs in our schools are not working, and attending school, school under Plan A will not solve that. I am afraid for my sister to go to school under Plan A. My family and I have worked hard to stay safe, but other families haven't. That makes me feel unsafe in school. I wish you would go to each school and understand how difficult it is to socially distance. I want my sister to be safe. When I go to school, I tend to feel nervous, especially during lunch, when everyone has their mask off. It is hard for me to deal with it, and I can't imagine how hard it would be for an eight-year-old. You don't have a plan for Plan A. How will we stay safe on a bus or during lunch? We all want to go to school, but we need to do it safely. Mr. McManus, I trusted you to keep us safe, and you let me down. Most of the board has let us down. You have a responsibility to keep us safe, and you haven't. Please, please keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isles.
Thank you.
Sandy Isles. Ms. Sandy Isles.
Good evening. Before I begin, I hope the board recognizes the theme spoken of safety and well-being for our students. Tonight, the board will be voting on a policy regarding rules for seclusion and restraint. Last month, my concerns about this policy were ignored, while the district and board attorney defended this dangerously vague policy. This policy does not require trained personnel when restraining a child, which means a substitute teacher would be permitted to restrain children. This policy also allows for mechanical restraint, which is defined as any device or material attached or adjacent to a student's body that restricts freedom of movement. This policy also says mechanical restraint can be used as reasonably needed for self-defense. So under this policy, a substitute teacher could duct tape a kindergartner to a chair for a minor infraction such as throwing a pencil if that substitute felt it was reasonable for self-defense. This policy is inhumane. I've read the law, but we know laws are not always just. For the protection of staff and students, and frankly, the school district, this policy must be clear. No person without proper training should ever restrain a child as improper use of restraint can injure or worse, kill a child. I also want to discuss my disappointment in our board's decision to reject the updated CDC guidance. Ms. Adams, it's shameful that as a board chair, you did not call a meeting to discuss all safety data to protect our children. Should we now expect the board to reject federal guidance if our district experiences a future meningitis outbreak? Is that the negligent precedent you're setting? And Mr. Wildebeau, you quoted scripture from Esther. Yet unlike Esther, you failed to protect your people, 26,000 students and staff. Three weeks ago, our board brushed, all safely, sorry. Three weeks ago, our board brushed all safety concerns aside and voted for the most dangerous option for our children. Lack of planning and leadership is also resulting in our schools being ill-equipped to meet our students' social and emotional and educational needs. Lack of district-wide planning is why some middle school students have over 100 children in their Zoom classes. How do teachers teach effectively with 100 students at a time? And why are we expecting our children to learn in that environment? Many families do not even know who their child's teacher will be, starting this Monday. That's not okay. If I sound angry, I am, and I should be angry when politics are more important than our children's safety. We can respectfully disagree on many issues, but I cannot agree with morally reprehensible decisions that sacrifice child safety when you have safer alternatives. You did not even try to implement Plan A safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isles. Ms. Kaylee Pear.
Hi. As a teacher and a member of the New Hanover County Association of Educators, I first want to thank the board for their efforts in working with the Health Department to ensure that many of our teachers were able to get vaccinated this past week. Although vaccines are not the only step we must take toward a safe reopening, they are an important one. We have spent a lot of time talking about COVID and how to safely reopen schools. And while I do hope that the board will continue to look for ways to increase social distancing, I, like many others, am ready to look forward and start talking about some of the other important issues that face our schools. When we reopen schools, I believe that they must be not only physically safe for our students, but also create a welcoming environment for all students. That is why I urge the board to amend the discipline policy to forbid suspension of our youngest students. In fact, if it were up to me, I think that we should be talking about seriously reducing suspensions for pre-K through eighth-grade students. In my six years as a middle school teacher, I cannot think of a single time that suspending a student for misbehavior has solved the problems. When students are suspended, they do not magically return with better behavior. The only lesson our students learn from suspension is that they are not welcome at school, that the classroom is not a place where they belong. Instead of suspension, I urge you to consider embracing a philosophy of restorative justice. Instead of kicking students out of school, give them the space and tools to learn how to process their emotions, understand any harm they've caused, make amends, and learn from their mistakes. Of course, this will take some hard work. We need time and resources to implement restorative justice in a meaningful way. We need counselors who have time to mediate conflicts with students and staff. We need training for all staff members to help us learn new ways of thinking about discipline. But I know that ending suspensions and embracing restorative justice would be a worthwhile investment. Our most vulnerable students, including our students of color, who are suspended at astonishing rates compared to their white peers, are counting on us. So when it's safe to fully reopen and fill our classrooms with students, let's welcome them, show them they belong, and keep them in the classroom. Thank you.
Ms. Josie Barnhart.
Good evening. Last month, I came to you to speak on behalf of our elementary students who were wanting to engage in Plan A, and I appreciate you for allowing that decision to happen. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the secondary students who would like that same opportunity of daily instruction. I understand it's a different demographic because our governor has only allowed Plan B to occur, which really the only difference is maintaining that distance. Please know, as you've engaged in dialogue with me, many of you know this is my first year in the district. My daughter's a kindergartner. But please make no mistake when I say that just because I'm new doesn't mean I care less. And I bet you, Dr. Faust, would say the same thing, being new to the district as well. Prior to me birthing my three biological children, I had hundreds of my babies that were secondary kids that I taught, and they knew that I cared for and was going to push beyond a shadow of a doubt to make them be successful. In the meeting, the comment that really just pushed me over the edge to be here tonight was why not, why not just wait? Year's almost over. Let's just deal with it next year. And that's when I knew that I had to say something for these secondary kids. Because when somebody notified me, two weekends ago, a Brunswick County student took their life. That's why. I don't want to wait for something bad to happen to one of these kids or worse to happen because we're just trying to get by. We have adjusted and adapted our Plan B from the beginning. We initially talked about every three weeks they were going to go to school. Then we said, let's do it two days a week, because that's better than every three weeks. Good. We got our ELL kids, our IEP kids, our special needs kids, acceptances to do four days a week. That's awesome. We expanded that when we saw the failing rate of kids and said, we will allow those kids to petition to go to four days a week, as well as supporting our staff and saying, their students, their children can also go four days a week. I appreciate that, and I value that. Our leadership team made a mass vaccination event last Wednesday and tomorrow to get 1,200 of our staff last week and hopefully the 1,500 tomorrow to get that vaccine. Thank you for that. Please allow this leadership team to do their part. If you allow them the opportunity to have secondary students petition for a daily in-person learning experience, they can address the needs and can safety. they can address the needs and can safety concerns, including safety mitigations of distance, transportation, to make that happen, but you have to allow it. It can be done and implemented, if you so choose, by minimum, uh, minimum nine weeks after spring break, which would give almost four and a half weeks of daily instruction to these kids that have been missing out for so long. I would implore you to do that tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhart. Mr. Dorian Cromarty. Mr. Cromarty? I think I saw him. Ms. Angela Keeney.
Good evening. Ms. Crable recently compared the call to audience to failing plans to reopen New Hanover County schools to quote, "There is no Plan B. It's Plan A you come, or Plan C you email us." I guess that lets us know how our remote learners became a last priority as Plan B students never were of value to our board. We all know the failing rates for quarter one, so I'm interested to hear those numbers for quarter two and quarter three. I'm also wondering what would be the point in emailing this board? My colleague emailed months before the Peter Frank's case of sexual assault came to light. Mr. Blue responded that he didn't have enough information to protect children, nor did he want the liability. This resulted in a multitude of other children being victimized by the same predator as a result of the board's failure to investigate. After the call to audience, we were silenced again to keep the public from hearing about the unresolved case of sexual assault at Bradley Creek and the missing paperwork that details that abuse and possibly a rape. I emailed every single board member sitting before me, the superintendent. I emailed the Title IX director with the specifics of that case so you could no longer claim ignorance. Only one of you responded, one of nine. No one reached out to the victim. There's no mention of this case even on your agenda or anything related to Title IX. In fact, less than two days later, you quickly and quietly again moved that assistant principal responsible to an undisclosed location where I can only guess she continues to draw a paycheck and there remains zero accountability for this family. I have followed your advice, Ms. Crable, long before you ever even placed your name on a ballot. And I email, I call, and I show up at every meeting. Still, you fail to respond. I'll again reference the article in Port City Daily where Ms. Crable stated that she would just follow the majority of her constituents with regards to taking away the remote option in the voice of the public. She stated that it wasn't necessarily worth falling on your sword for. And I'm wondering if the board feels the same way about sexual assault. Are y'all blindly following the leadership of the chair and the vice chair who've already proven that they do not care about protecting children through their previous vote on this issue? Is that not worth falling on the sword for either? We know the safety of the public isn't worth it to the board, so is the safety of our children not as well? I'm also curious how Mr. Blue claims to truly care about mental health issues. He references as if that's just a political agenda. Because as of now, it's been two years and many victims, and the many victims of sexual assault have received nothing in terms of mental health for the trauma that they've endured. In fact, it's this leadership that's responsible for revictimizing them over and over again, one deposition after another, and telling their stories of a pedophile that's already confessed and been convicted of his crimes against children. I actually worry about the mental health of this governing body and their decision-making and abuse of power and ours if we do nothing and let it happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Keeney.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard Wilkins.
Thank you for the invitation. I got involved with Mark Robinson recently.
Mr. Wilkins, can you keep your mask up? Thank you.
All right. I recently got involved with Mark Robinson, and he suggested that we all get more involved with the activities of the Board of Education to help and to assist and to learn. I'm in a quandary here with 45 to 60, am I correct, policies that are being reviewed. Where would we find as the public where these policies are? A, B, the status of them? Like, can we have public comment on them? Where would we make public comment? How would we initiate? And then finally, when the policies do get accepted, I spent 25 years here coaching lacrosse, refereeing, et cetera. How do you take it down to the level of implementation? Is a policy going to take a month? When you do your policies, do you have a timeframe in which you intend to have it go to promulgation and in action? And finally, where is the forum in which the community, from what I understand right now, cannot participate? They cannot call in. I understand prior to this, YouTube was not working for anyone to see this on the outside. So, we talk a lot right now about transparency. We talk a lot about communication in the community. I think the board needs to have a little more transparency to let us know. And finally, just reading something recently that one of your members thought the pace of these policies or new policies should slow down. You removed her from the policy board, and I'd like an explanation of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, excuse me. Ms. Sherman Mack.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm here concerned the high rate of our black kids in our community being suspended. I feel that there should be other methods set in place besides just putting our kids out of school, especially our younger kids and IEP kids. They really don't have the real understanding of what's going on. Some infractions are minor, and our kids are still being suspended off of minor situations. I understand fully if the kids were older and had more serious infractions, then I would agree with the suspension fully, sorry. Suspending kids' period should be our last resort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mack.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes our call to the audience. Thank you to everyone that spoke. All right, moving along. Next item on the agenda are our items for information. And first up is our COVID-19 update. I believe that we are going to welcome Ms. Julie Varnum to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Faust. So, I'll start with our Plan A preparedness information. And on Zoom, I have Ms. Carla Turner joining me. It can't be the Julie and Carla Show without Carla showing up. And then other members of our leadership team will step in to share their updates. So, I want to make sure we have Ms. Turner there. So, again.
I'm here.
Okay, perfect. First, we want to mention or speak a little bit about the CDC recommendations of late versus the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and local health department requirements. Ms. Turner, do you want to start with that?
Sure, I would, I would, I'd first start off by just sharing that, you know, the CDC comes out with their recommendations, and the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as the North Carolina Department of Public Construction, works with those recommendations and that information to put together guidelines for the school systems to follow, as well as information and guidance for local health to follow. They use the information that the CDC has been putting out for months now to develop the Strong Schools Toolkit. And they have updated that as needed as new information comes out. So, once we get that guidance from the state, the health department takes that guidance and shares it, works with the school system on how to best implement those things. The CDC did recently put out some operational strategies, I think it was about four days ago, for K through 12, it's for K through 12 schools. I know we're talking about K through five. And I will say that I know there's been talk about with Plan A, the concern of many folks is the physical distancing. And so, what the CDC says is that six feet is best, but if there are, if in the school, physical distancing of at least six feet amongst students, teachers, and staff within a class cohort or pod is not possible at all times, the school should work to ensure that distancing can be met between classes, cohorts, and pods. So, if you can't get it amongst the individual children, at least with the pods, you can distance them. So, but that's how we come up with our guidance. We work with what the CDC puts out, how the state takes that, interprets that, works with other state partners, pushes that down to us, and then we take that and work with the school system to help implement and put those practices into place.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Turner. Next, I want to review the current risk metrics for New Hanover County schools and give you a quick reminder of the risk matrix indicators of moderate, elevated, and high. Moderate, of course, suggests that we have a lower risk of the COVID-19 spread in our schools and really may consider in-person instruction as long as we're able to implement the required health and safety measures. Elevated shares that or suggest that we have an increased risk of COVID-19 spread and might need to consider hybrid instructional models as ways to reduce the number of people in the schools and the classrooms at any one given time. The high risk suggests there's a higher risk of COVID-19 spread and that in-person or increasing in-person instruction is not advisable. I'll move on into our secondary transmissions data. This can be found on our website alongside the dashboard information. We have not had any additional transmissions over the past week. We are still at 19, and we see here where those fall out among elementary, middle school, and high school students. And then that transmission of staff to staff versus student to staff, student to student, and then staff to student. Next, our overall COVID positives and quarantines. For the past 14 days, ending on Friday, the 26th, is that right? Elementary at 49, 41 of those are students. Middle at 28, 27 of those being students. High school, 20, 17 being students. And then our quarantines at a total of 135. And you see that breakdown of 76 at elementary, where 67 are students. 29 at middle, all are students. And at high school, 30, where 19 are students. In addition, analysis of cluster is identified as five or more positive cases within a 14-day period that are connected by transmission. Within the past 28 days, we did have one cluster as determined by North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services through information from the New Hanover County Public Health Department, Holly Shelter, with one staff and six students. And that takes us to our current risk identification as moderate. If you see your elementary, middle versus high school breakdown from the matrix indicators, our information regarding elementary schools is lower than our secondary schools, of course. And our data as of last Friday compared to our February report shows improvements in less transmission, less number of cases, and less quarantines. So, one of our resources that comes through our authoritative source, which is that Strong Schools Toolkit that Ms. Turner was referencing, a reminder from the Department of Health and Human Services is that lower rates of transmission in schools than the community suggest schools can be a protective environment because of monitoring and adherence to the prevention measures. Again, that might not be present in the community. Here's a link to our dashboard for the more up-to-date broad breakout of COVID positives and COVID quarantines by school and by date. And now I'll move into our preparedness for Plan A. So, as a part of our preparedness, we moved further into enrollment. You'll get a little bit more information in a little while. A presentation from Scribbles and our director, Kristen Jackson, on online enrollment launch and choice registration. In addition, data collection, dissemination, and transparency with schools and public, enhancing our partnership with our local health department, providing our COVID-19 risk matrix dashboard and training videos, and then in addition, our vaccine clinics, one from last week and one that's happening tomorrow. Preparation additionally includes social and emotional needs of our students and staff. As a part of our preparedness, we have, over the entire time of the pandemic or our COVID-19 closures, implemented universal social emotional learning in elementary and middle schools, provided additional mental health first aid training to staff, and then incorporated press pause for wellness as a resilience effort with our staff. Additional preparedness includes social distancing preparation within our schools, pandemic safety drills that would include the social distancing needs as a part of fire drills, tornado drills, and earthquake drill responses, assisted schools individually with direct alignment to the Strong Schools Toolkit. Of course, coordinated with our local health department and our schools to delegate our school nurses as the authoritative source within the building regarding COVID-19 quarantines and contact tracing. And then worked alongside other divisions in our district in the acquisition of PPE with our New Hanover County Emergency Management in schools. Additional pandemic-related equipment for our specialized services, such as occupational physical therapy, were provided. We were able to work alongside our itinerant staff, especially our teachers of students with special needs, and increase their staff-student caseloads since most of those were being provided virtually, and then support them in scheduling those. Our school counseling staff and social workers have been working diligently on the identification and location of students who haven't been engaging in their online learning or remote learning opportunities. And then we've worked to establish safe home visit protocols so that we can have visits to ensure the safety of our students if we haven't had responsiveness from them. The student numbers for Plan A are, as shown here, our total enrollment, 11,241. Number of students in face-to-face, 9,582. I don't know if Dr. Smith also wants this, would fell into this one, so, okay. I want to make sure Dr. Smith has an opportunity to come and share this, which 85.2% of our students are identified to be face-to-face, with the number of remote students at 1,479, and then Virtual Academy at 161. Okay, and I will turn it over to Ms. Dawn Branson for technology and digital learning.
Okay, in the area of technology and digital learning, we have done a lot to help prepare our teachers for this, this change in instruction. So, in training, we have provided instructional resources for teachers in creating modules and slides and presentations for them, as well as being at the school site and allowing teachers to come and meet with our digital teaching and learning specialists to help them prepare and create lessons and share resources. So, in the area of instructional, instructional resources, we covered the resources. We've also done a lot of online training for teachers, both in teaching with a remote environment as well as resources for them to use in their classrooms with the students as they come back for face-to-face. Device distribution, we have distributed over 13,000 devices to students at all levels, as well as over 1,500 hotspots. We continue to distribute devices as the requests are there. As long as students are asking for, we will make sure that they have a device for them to use at home. Wi-Fi. We have worked with partners from the community and from the county to provide 28 drive-up hotspot locations across the county where you can drive up and get, students can get internet access, as well as 10 community childcare facilities for students who have been going to childcare facilities because they've not been able to come to school every day. So, they've had increased bandwidth and internet at those childcare facilities provided by the community partners in the county. And then lastly, book distribution. The public library has donated some books to us. Then our media specialist had worked during Plan C as well as Plan B. When parents have done drive-up, breakfast and lunch pickup, distributing books, as well as taking books out to neighborhoods and distributing books to students. And we distributed over 700 books that way.
All right, next. So, in looking at the preparedness of the operations division, I'd like to go back to the same three areas that we discussed before. Transportation, facilities, and... Transportation, facilities, and child nutrition. In transportation, we're successfully operating bus routes right now with forty-seven fewer drivers than we had prior to COVID. Community bus stops have addressed driver shortage and reduced bus, and are reduced bus capacities. Right now, we're ninety-nine point three percent on-time morning arrivals. So I think the Transportation Department is doing a great job. And in looking and preparing for Plan A, I mentioned before, we are on target for fewer than ten percent of our buses under Plan A to have forty-eight students or more. And I do believe that in that first two weeks when we're comparing requests for transportation versus actual ridership, we will reduce that even further and get closer and closer to our goal of no bus with forty-eight students or more. And in the facilities area, we have provided enhanced training on procedures and products and equipment for disinfecting our schools' facilities and equipment. We're also using electrostatic sprayers in all of our schools and on our school buses. We've increased our building ventilation and air filtration, operating our systems at the most optimal level to provide a refresh of air within the building as often as possible. And most importantly, I think, is we're continuing to provide that preventive maintenance and monitoring of those systems. So we make sure that we continue that. And I will add too that we have been visiting several schools, myself and many of my team. And even when the schools have called and said, hey, we're having problems setting up. We're just concerned that we're not achieving our goal of three-foot separation. By the time we've left, every one of those schools, we've achieved that. So I can't say for certain that every classroom in every school, but every classroom in every school that I've been to and members of my team have been into. We have been able to meet that three-foot goal. And lastly, in looking at child nutrition, we're continuing to operate our curbside crab and goat meal service under Plan A. That will be reduced. But the summer food service program continues. We'll be providing free meals for all children eighteen years of age and younger. And to date, the student, our child nutrition division has actually served over one point six million meals. So we, and we're planning already for the summer. So I know that, you know, we will be expanding that operation again this summer and look forward to serving more meals in our communities. Thank you.
Can I, actually, let's just, Ms. Justice, let's hold all questions until the end of the presentation.
That's what I mean, are we doing this at the end?
Yep, once everybody goes, we can come back and ask questions.
Does that mean, I guess, Ms. Butler, is that her name?
Turner.
Turner.
Ms. Turner, yes, she's still on there. Go ahead, Dr. Cook.
Good evening. From the human resources perspective, we have been working to increase the number of substitute teachers who are available to serve. So we have increased the number of active substitutes from one seventy-four to two fourteen. We have launched a substitute teacher campaign. So we're hoping to increase that number more significantly as we move forward. Additionally, we've worked collaboratively with our principals to fill some existing vacancies, hiring a hundred and six new employees since the beginning of January.
Good evening. Just to follow up on, with finance, our purchasing group has distributed one point two million to date in PPE cleaning supplies and equipment. And currently, they have two hundred twenty-eight thousand in additional supplies available for distribution if schools ask for it. So we have that in the warehouse and we have another three hundred thousand budgeted for future needs. So we feel very prepared in terms of that. We have over thirteen million in relief funds that we've already received from state, mostly federal, but state, federal. And we've spent over half of that. We'll have those funds available through September of twenty-two, so they're for this year and next year. We're also anticipating another twenty-five million in additional federal funding, which will be used for the next two years to provide technology, staffing stabilization, and additional student program. With that, I, the next slide is just questions for any of us, so.
All right, to keep this, thank you very much to all of you for that presentation. To keep this somewhat organized, since you don't have microphones at your seats, why don't we go in the order of the presenters? So if we can start with Ms. Varnum and Ms. Turner, if there are any questions for her. We'll then move on to Dr. Smith if there's any questions. And then I believe it was Ms. Brinson, right? So that'll be our first three. So if anyone from the board has some questions for Ms. Varnum or Ms. Turner.
I do have just two quick questions. The Holly Shelter outbreak, was that sports-related?
Yes.
The Holly Shelter cluster?
Yes, that was sports-related.
Okay, and I guess the other question is that, and I'm sure we'll talk about it later, but I just want to know how you guys made a miracle happen with those vaccines. So I'm sure we can deal with it at some point, but I just wanted to say thanks to Ms. Turner and to you because we asked the impossible and you did what was possible and we'll never forget it.
All right, anyone else? Ms. Craybill?
And maybe I was spacing out and listening, but one of my questions about the CDC versus the toolkits differences. The, I didn't think I heard any comparisons. I mean, Carla did a good job of telling where they came from and how we work together. But I think that the biggest issue is the six feet. And so how, how are we reconciling that? Or, well, I guess I just wanted folks to know that we are following the toolkit. And because that's what Governor Cooper has asked us to do. And so are we compelled to follow the CDC guideline? Or are we compelled to follow the toolkit guideline when there's differences?
Okay, so, and I'll be glad for Ms. Turner to speak in as well. I do want to clarify something. The CDC recommendations are just that, recommendations. The Stronger Schools Toolkit is a requirement of the governor.
So one says six feet and one says as close to six feet as you can get.
Yes.
So we follow, and that's the toolkit's one?
Yes.
So we follow the, and could you explain just briefly why Plan A does not require six feet or close to six feet, but Plan B does?
So that is, that is the very difference between Plan A and Plan B, is that social distancing component. Ms. Turner, do you want to add anything to my comment about the CDC versus the toolkit?
Sure, yes. Like we were saying, the latest guidance from the CDC does say that you want to try to maintain six feet, but it does put the caveat in that if you cannot maintain six feet, you do the best that you can. And with the toolkit, if I don't have it in front of me, but if I'm remembering Plan A appropriately, it says, again, you maintain as much distance as you possibly can, understanding that in most instances, it is not going to be the six feet, but that you do the best that you can to keep physical distancing as distant as you can, even though it won't be the six feet. So, and exactly, you know, the CDC or the other recommendations. And then like, like Ms. Varnum was saying, then you're going to follow what the, what DPI puts together and pushes down to the local school systems.
Yes, and the latest CDC operational strategy for K-12 schools, the statement on, and Ms. Turner, this is the document you shared with me. The statement for mitigation strategies to reduce the transmission of SARS-CoV-2 in schools. Of course, regardless of level of community transmission, the mitigations have to be layered, the mitigation efforts. And the first mitigation effort would be universal and correct use of masks should be required. Next, physical distancing, at least six feet, should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. And that, that's on the CDC language for schools. And that does match the toolkit language. But the exact difference between Plan A and B is that six feet requirement versus recommendation.
Yeah, and I just wanted you to sort of explain to our, our community why it seems counterintuitive that you would, when you're getting more people, you would lessen the, the distance. But it's because that's just the way the, the science falls out, is that how we explain it?
Right, the goal isn't to lessen the distancing. The goal is to increase the number of students for face-to-face learning.
Right, right.
And it's at a cost.
Okay.
And, and the cost would be whether you can maintain that six feet or whether you maintain it to the maximum extent possible.
So that's just part of our risk assessment and the risk that we take?
Yes.
Ms. Justice, do you have a question?
Well, yes, the CDC guidelines came out, they changed two weeks ago. I think it's been two or three weeks since the current administration brought them up. And their first statement was that the absolute safest was six feet maintained. Now, what Ms. Turner just had, well, you just read that Ms. Turner shared with you, is a little different than that because I didn't see that part when she, they first came out a couple of weeks ago. Has that been changed, Ms. Turner, since that time?
Yet, yes, ma'am, Ms. Justice, has, this, this information came out four days ago from the CDC.
The suggestion. And that also sort of, I guess you could say, says that there's a problem with the toolkit too. It's the same thing, they haven't been updated, not that they necessarily would now, since it sounds like it's sort of almost a go-back than what they were doing two weeks ago. And now it fits more closely with the toolkit, which still hadn't been updated from the two weeks ago. I don't know if you followed what I just said, but.
I think I followed you. And the toolkit, I believe, the latest update to the toolkit is still February second, unless it has happened since Friday.
I've been watching, it has.
Okay.
Mr. McManus?
Julie, I want to make sure I understand. Plan B, vertical and remote, and the combination. There were eleven thousand two hundred forty-one students. With Plan A, nine thousand five hundred eighty-two, which is about eighty-five percent, are going to Plan A, person to person.
Yes. And Dr. Smith, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Can I just ask one question, please?
Yes, Ms. Walker.
Does Ms. Turner know what their community spread rate is right now? I know it's kind of not the same as in schools, but I'm curious. I heard it did come down, but I just would like to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, I do, I can tell you our percent positive right now, just from the state's website, New Hanover County's percent positive is five point five percent, which is phenomenal compared to the fact that we were over nine percent about four weeks ago. The state's percent positive is five point seven percent. So we're a couple of tenths of a percentage point below the state. You know, and then this could be any number of factors. We believe we're past that Christmas slash New Year's surge. We are pushing out vaccinations and we are continuing to encourage, you know, three W's, wearing, washing, and waiting six feet apart. So, yes, the, the numbers are encouraging.
Do you anticipate anything to do with the variants? And I'm only asking because I feel like that's what the topic of discussion is now with the new variants. And that might lead to plateaus or even a little bump in the numbers. Do you know anything about New Hanover?
What I, what I have, what I actually read today on some credible websites, we're talking about the variants, where that we do, and actually on the state local health department call that we have every Tuesday, it was shared that we will begin seeing variants in North Carolina. I don't think there's any way we can avoid that. And because some of them are a little more transmissible, then we may see some increases, like you say, some little bumps. But we need to continue to be vigilant, push out vaccines, continue to push, you know, waiting six feet apart, washing your hands and wearing your masks. Just not letting our guard down. And that's something we want to emphasize. If I can speak real quickly to vaccines, to Mr. Boyer, you are welcome. I cannot thank your senior staff and your schools enough for the amazing cooperation they have given us over the last week to put these things in place. We did vaccinate, at the two sites that public health oversaw last Wednesday, we vaccinated one thousand one hundred public school, private school, and childcare staff, which was phenomenal. And the hospital had capacity to do just over a thousand as well. I don't have their numbers, but that was, that was great. And as of right now, I just checked our information, the two sites, public health is running tomorrow. We already, we have seven hundred and twenty-three appointments. Again, that's public school, private, private, and charter schools and childcare centers. With the capacity to do even more, we're at about seventy percent. We're having our appointments build at the HHS building and about literally sixty percent at Trask Middle School. So we are going to continue taking appointments for staff tomorrow. So we are very excited about that. But I do want to continue to emphasize, just because we put vaccines out there, and this is community-wide, just because we're vaccinated doesn't mean we can stop wearing our masks and stop being diligent and diligent with, vigilant with what we're doing. And that's very important for people to remember that message.
Anyone else have a question for Ms. Varnum or Ms. Turner?
No, I would like to add that Walgreens is doing it now. I've heard teachers are doing that.
Yes. Mr. McManus?
Is anyone going to address the summer schools, the state summer school, which falling behind Plan A really gives an opportunity and an arena to try to recapture?
I believe we'll be talking about that at another time. It's not on the agenda for this evening.
And could I, could I ask Ms. Turner, Ms. Turner, how long does it take? I guess you could say, because right now we've got the two different Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. How long does it take from the first inoculation, then through the second? And then how long does it take from the first to, I guess you could say, establish the maximum protection of the vaccine?
Well, okay, with Moderna, after your first dose of Moderna, you have, right around, I, I, don't quote me, it's either eighty-two or eighty percent, eighty-six percent immunity after the first dose. And then with the second dose, which you can call booster dose, then you move up to the ninety-four point five percent immunity, about two weeks after the second dose. With Pfizer after the first dose, you have roughly, I want to say between fifty-five and sixty percent immunity after the first dose. And then with the second dose, which Pfizer's three weeks apart, two weeks after that, you're up to ninety-five percent immunity. So both of them are two weeks past your, you have maximum immunity two weeks past your second dose.
Could you repeat the Moderna one again? Did you say eighty percent, the first shot?
Yes, ma'am, you get, you get, after the first dose, you have about the information on their, the emergency use authorization, their fact sheets says, you get about just over eighty percent immunity with the first dose. And then with the second dose, it boosts you up to ninety-four point five percent immunity from, from the clinical trials. That's what they found.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner, just, just one thing I want to say. I know you just addressed how many you vaccinated, just want to say thank you again. The organization of which the vaccine rollout occurred last week and for what's coming tomorrow, I have not heard of any other school system and county health department that have worked together and partnered the way that New Hanover County has. So thank you to our team here that has been working around the clock. And thank you to public health, Carla, you and your team have just been amazing. So just hats off to you for all that you've done. And I know that our educators, and we are incredibly thankful for all of the work. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Is it possible for, I know that you don't have a plan yet, but to just assure everybody that you're working on a plan for the second round? Because that is where I've gotten like a bunch of emails. People are concerned about the second round and like, oh, my God, what do I do?
We do have a plan.
Yeah, I'm sure you do, I just want to.
Definitely, we do. Definitely a plan. And I will just say it's, the schedules are not exactly the same as they have been last weekend tomorrow, but there is a plan.
Okay, that's why I want, I want everybody to hear that, that we are not just flying by.
In the works.
Yeah.
All right, we have Mr. Anderson and Ms. Brinson up here. Are there any questions for operations or for technology?
Just a question about the buses. Where would you say the most concerning area is? Buses, at schools, is it, where is it?
Well, I think, you know, with the buses in both areas, we're cleaning and disinfecting. We're doing a little more in our school buildings in terms of ventilation and filtration than we're able to do in our buses.
Are we riding with the windows open? Will we be riding with the windows open in the buses or?
When weather permits, we certainly are.
Anyone else?
I've watched the bus drivers do some cleaning and they are doing some good stuff.
Yeah, I had, I had another question for Eddie Anderson, Mr. Anderson. You said you've been in a number of schools and that you have seen in every school you've been in that you see that they're able to have at least three feet separation? Is that what you had said?
That's correct. And, you know, wherever we've been.
In the classroom?
We've worked with, we've worked with the classroom teacher to achieve that three-foot separation. The only exception would be if students are seated together at a table, but we're providing the plastic tabletop dividers in most cases.
Okay, and how many schools would you say you've been in?
Probably just fewer than half.
Okay.
But, and that's because we, most of our schools are able to get their classrooms set up without our assistance. We extended that offer to all schools. And we only went to those schools that requested assistance if they did not feel they were able to achieve that three-foot goal. It's a, there's no requirement, but that, we kind of established that as our goal.
And now with the buses too, what is the maximum? We don't know until, we do, until we go into A. But what would be the maximum amount of kids so far it looks like might be on some buses?
We don't think we'll have any buses, we know we won't have any buses that are at capacity with seventy-two passengers. You know, we're, we're looking at somewhere around, you know, fifty-five at a very max. But we're trying to, we're trying to get down below that goal of. But we're trying to, we're trying to get down below that goal of 48 students per bus.
And how many students per seat if it was 48?
That would be two per seat.
So anything above 48, three, is two kids on the seat?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Anderson?
Oh, no, not for Mr. Anderson.
All right, Ms. Brinson, come on up. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I have a question, please. I was, I've been hearing some teachers, or sorry, some parents say that their kids are having trouble losing work when they try and turn in virtual things. And I can get more specific, I guess, when I, I can dig into it. But kids are losing work when they try and put it in, but then they have to redo the assignment over and over. Have you had any feedback about that or know why that would be happening?
There have been a couple of instances we have, and we've, we've kind of helped them when we've been able to. It's kind of hard when it's not happening. We do have a student help desk number. So if you could, you know, guide them to call the student help desk, we will gladly, you know, walk them through, helping them, make sure they get their stuff turned in.
So just to just call the hotline and if not, I guess if there's someone else?
And I will have it for you before the end of the meeting. I'd have to look it up, but there is a student help desk number. And we advertise that, and then we definitely will help them.
Is that advertised district-wide in every school to all these kids?
Yes, it is. And it's also on, on the website with all the other COVID information that we've got with technology.
All right, anything else for Ms. Brinson? All right, thank you very much. Dr. Coker, waiting in the wings. All right, any questions regarding HR issues?
I just have a very basic question. Dr. Coker, are you confident that we are ready to cover any and all eventualities? I mean, well, a little reason.
That's a big reason.
Are you confident that we have the substitute coverage to make sure that we are good to go for K-5?
So what I can say to that is we are increasing the number of substitutes that we have. And principals have done an incredible job of making sure that they have coverage and that coverage is in place. They really have. But we're reaching out to principals and working with them to make sure we have coverage. And looking at the upcoming fill rates, we're in good shape.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Justice?
Now, you said that we have 214 as of now subs that we have that are active. And you had, last meeting, you said you had a cert of standing where it is.
That's pretty much standing where it is. We're assuming that the folks that we're hiring now who are saying, yes, I'm going to sub, I'm going to report, that they're going to be active. So that would increase the number of people who are saying, you know, that they're ready to serve.
And also the, you made the comment that the principals are doing a great job. Does this mean that they're finding people within the building to cover when you can't find subs? Is that what you're referring to?
In some cases, they've done that. They're also helping us to recruit additional subs for the classrooms.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Anything else for HR? You're good, thank you, Ms. Mall. Thank you, Dr. Coker. Anything for finance?
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Walker.
Do you, I know they're going to be hopefully passing this bill in Congress for the schools. And I don't know if you've read up on that or do you know? That's not included in any of this money you're talking about, right, that you already have allotted?
See, I mentioned some pending funding that we don't have yet. That is, is, it's not, that's already approved. What they're talking about would be more than, would be in addition to that. So the 25 million is already allocated to the state, just has not been allocated to the districts. What they're doing in Congress now would be even possibly more.
How do you normally get the federal funds? Does it have to funnel through the state for that or do you have to apply for it? Like if they approved it in Congress?
It's allotted to us and then we have to develop a plan and submit the plan and have it approved.
Okay, and is that discretionary? I mean, can you go for anything or does it have to be specifically?
It has to be, well, I won't, I don't have the guidelines on the new money, but I think it'll be very similar to our CARES Act funding that we have now, the larger one, 6 million. And it can be used for anything that we can already use title funds for in terms of, you know, supplemental education and additional funds. But it also is expanded to anything related to safety and, you know, anything on the custodial side to keep the building safe, as well as stabilization, meaning if we lose funding from state or, or local sources, we can, we can move expenses there. So those are the three big areas. And of course, technology.
Because budget, budgets come, so I was wondering.
Mr. Wildmore?
I have a question, but actually, and I'm not exactly sure who this question should go to. I'm understanding that as we move to Plan A, that teachers would either teach in person or remotely, but not both. But it's come to my attention that we may have some that are still being asked to do both. I just wanted to, I don't know if that's Dr. Smith or Dr. Faust?
So I did send a memo out to the board to address that. Principals came to us asking us if they would be able to have teachers teach remote and in person because they had teachers who were saying, we want to do this. So they were given that option. We didn't give them any directive or anything. So that was a consensus at whatever the school, whoever the schools were, that they wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Could I have, I'll ask you a question? Now, you said that $25 million was allotted to the state, is that for this district?
No, the 25 million is, is the pending allotment to our school system from, from this additional federal funding. So it hasn't been, I guess the legislature's deciding at this point exactly, you know, what the rules are around it. But at this point, it's on DPS website, it's a pending allotment. It's a little over 25 million. But I would expect that we'll have it within about a month. So as soon as we do, I'll let you know the details.
And so that's for this district?
That's for our district.
And the 15 million's already been approved?
The what?
The 15 million has already been approved as here. Didn't you say there was 15 million?
Well, yeah, that was a combination of lots of different, so it was CARES funding as well as, the state also got CARES funding. So the governor gave us part of theirs. So there was, there was almost, I don't remember the exact number, but like 12 different allotments that totaled all, totaled all, totaled that, that number. And part of it was state funding that we got really early, you know, after the initial emergency. And then other funds continued to come.
Now, I don't know if you can, this money, you were saying some of the uses for, like possibly for filtration systems and things like that for the classrooms. What about, can we use that potentially for possible staff supplements beyond what the state offers? Because we're, there's a, we're going to have some issues once all this is said and done. There's people that have left and people threatening to leave and all across the board, not just the teaching. I mean, I'm probably going to.
You couldn't use it for supplements, for, for salaries unless the person was paid in federal. So if you had a federally paid teacher, you could pay their supplement as we can now.
Oh, so it's going to be federal?
But you couldn't just say, we're going to give all our teachers a supplement and fund it from that. That it wouldn't be allowed. The person, the person has to be paid from, from federal in order to use it.
Thank you, that was interesting.
All right, we have far exceeded our COVID-19 update times. I'm going to close this. Thank you very much to all of our presenters for a very informative presentation. It has been requested that we take a quick five-minute break. So let's come back at 8:12, please. Let's be obedient with our steps. We'll come back at 8:12.
All right, welcome back. Thank you for entertaining that quick break. Our next item on the agenda are policies for first reading and I'm going to turn it over to Policy Committee Chair, Mr. Nelson Boyer.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. At this Policy Committee meeting, the Board discussed Policy 3445 Student Scholarships, Policy 4040 Staff-Student Relations, Policy 4110 Immunization and Health Requirements for School Admission, Policy 4115 Behavior Standards for Transfer Students, and Policy 4120 Domisal or Residence Requests/requirements. I have not heard from any Board members about any discussion for these policies, so unless there's something, yes?
The, I had just emailed you today because the, or texted you today about Policy 4040, which is the staff-student relations. The, when I, when I, when we had our Title IX Committee meeting, I was just reviewing that with Jerel because in Section C, Number Two, where it says "Reporting by Students", and it says in there that, you know, a student should report the situation immediately to the principal, school counselor, or the Title IX Coordinator. And in talking with Jerel, that he suggested that we put in the same wording that we have in our Title IX Committee, I mean, our Title IX policy, which is that we are, a student can report to any school employee, including but not limited to the principal, counselor, teacher, you know, just to make it clear that, that a teacher was allowed, and really, any school employee was, was a reporting entity. So I just wanted to ask the Board if they would be okay with that.
Sure, we can, we can have that, we can talk to Jerel and have that done.
I did, I mean, I talked to him today.
Sure.
And, and he couldn't come today because I asked him could he show up?
Well, this, this is just for first reading.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, we can definitely put it on because it's just for first reading.
Okay.
We can make those, we can make those changes.
Okay, sorry.
Absolutely. Is there any other policy discussion from the Board? I would like to, you know, once again, make sure that people are aware. First of all, all of our Policy Committee meetings are public. Anybody can attend any Policy Committee meeting. I know many of you have, so I just want to make sure that that, I know somebody brought that up and called it the audience. Also, the policies are on the agenda and will remain there for the duration of the month. Anybody can email on any policy and make sure that they give feedback, as many of you have done on 4300. So, I just want to make that clarification very briefly. Other than that, I have nothing else for these policies, Madam Chair.
All right, and they will be brought back for second reason, reading next month. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Sopix Solutions Presentation and Equity-Centered Approach. I'm going to ask Dr. LaShawn Smith to come to the podium, please, to introduce. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Faust, I am extremely excited to introduce to you Mrs. Stephanie Smith and Dr. Rodney, excuse me, Stephanie Smith, I apologize, and Dr. Rodney Smith from Sopix Solutions. They bring with them forty years of experience working with districts across the nation, and they're going to be working with New Hanover County Schools to help us to move to the next level of our work in the district around the topic of equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so, without any further delay, I present to you our representatives from Sopix Solutions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith, and greetings to the entire New Hanover County School, School Board, and to all the guests. We would love to share our screen with you. Will we be able to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm getting, I'm getting a thumbs up from the, from the tech folks, so I think yes.
Awesome. And, and first of all, thank you all for your service and the commitment that you're showing. We've been with you for a bit, and so we appreciate all the diligence that is, due diligence that is happening ensuring that our children and families are safe, so thank you all so much. So you should be able to see our screens.
Yes, ma'am.
The yellow and black screens, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So here we are. Hi, Randy.
Hi. Good evening. A little bit about us, as you can see, all of those things that describe us and who we are, all, and in addition to the fact that we are indeed life partners, we're married.
That's right.
And.
We are quarantining properly.
So we're quarantining.
We don't have our masks because we live together.
Right. So, and then we, we are also parents, and we have two wonderful children together as well. So, to give you a little bit about us and background. And I must say, I'm a Carolina boy as well. I grew up in South Carolina. So, I am so pleased to be talking to my, my, my home folk.
That's right. And as Dr. Smith shared in our brief bio, and we also invite each of you to visit our website to learn a little bit more about our background, and Rodney can share more about his. But, you know, my background is steeped in social work, in social services. For years, I've been able to serve as a social worker, and not only in direct practice, but also in community practice. Many of those years also poured into non-for-profit work, and so I was able to lead non-for-profits into really what I call equity in action. And so, as we move into engagement with you all, and we'll lay out our approach to this work, which we think is so important for you all to get a understanding, we'll be really excited to safely visit you, all of you all in the Wilmington community as we'll be taking flight and joining you all. But, this equity in action and being able to operationalize equity is not only an important component, it is an actual viable way to create sustainable change. And so, we're really excited to bring that expertise. So, coming to you with a social work background, as a parent, and then also as a community member who always wants to seek positive change.
Yeah, my background as an educator, I've been in particularly higher education for the past close to thirty years. In my current role, I serve as Vice President for Access and Engagement at William Jewel College. We're a small private school in the suburbs of Kansas City. We live here in Kansas City, Missouri. And prior to that, I, I would also spend quite a bit of time in the classroom teaching and facilitating discussions relative to this very topic, diversity, equity, inclusion, race, and racism. So, I'd like to believe I'm bringing a scholarly lens to the conversation, an academic lens to the conversation, and recognizing that there is a robust body of research out there that talks about these things, and I, I like to bring those into conversation because recognizing that we do have feelings and opinions about this topic, as we should, but I'd like to also bring facts into the conversation that couples with our feelings and opinions.
Absolutely, and so, for us, you know, Sopix Solutions is a change management firm. We help organizations, school districts, and other learning communities alike navigate change through an equity lens. And so, that becomes extremely important because when we talk about change, change happens in all sorts of ways, but if we're not intentional about how we actually navigate change, then we end up really producing some of the same disparate outcomes that, that face us today. And so, we won't spend much time, as we know that you all have been spending a good portion of your evening and still maybe have some other agenda items. But we do think it's important, as we all establish relationship and get to know each other, to understand what are our guiding principles. And so, for, for some that may be familiar with Bryan Stevenson's work, either through Just Mercy or through all of his various projects in the Innocence Network, these may look familiar. And so, as we engage throughout our time together, you'll hear us reference these.
Right.
And we'll even build upon them. And so, this "with" not "for" is extremely important because we're not coming in to supplant all of the efforts and even the brain trust that is within not only the Wilmington community, but also specifically within the, the new Hanover Community School, community. But really coming in to walk with and work in tandem. And we'll also be able to demonstrate this because one of the key pieces that we'll be working on will be the equity audit. And so, really being able to join in in that second one, getting proximate to the problem. For us, and for me specifically, what I love about this principle, it, it reminds us that people are not the problem. People experience problems, but people are not the problem. And so, what happens when we do the work to get proximate? So we'll be able to do that through the individual interviews and also the focus groups, and of course, as we join in and get to know all the various stakeholders, ideally the students and the families as well.
Yeah, you know, while all of these principles are extremely important, I think the two that I'll highlight this evening is this notion of being willing to be uncomfortable. Recognizing that, again, this conversation often makes us uncomfortable. We've been historically uncomfortable. Why? Because it's a taboo subject. We've made it a taboo topic in our society, and we're just, we're just not accustomed to having the conversation. It's not that we don't want that, or it's just that we have not been practicing these conversations expressly in a public way. But, you know, I think in the last, really in the last nine to twelve months, as a nation, we've been having more dialogue, which is a really good thing. And so, I think in some regards, many of us have become comfortable with this idea of being uncomfortable. And so, again, you know, I, I highlight that principle, that this work, acknowledging that we're not accustomed to, you know, having these conversations, but I think we have to, again, become comfortable with being uncomfortable because, you know, justice is on the other end of our discomfort in being able to talk about these conversations. And I'll conclude with what seems like is at the bottom of the list, but I would suggest that is supporting the rest of the list, this notion of hope in the face of brutal facts. You know, again, and I, I, we, we position hope as not this whimsical thing, but we position hope as this thing that, you know, it, it is steeped in action. That, that we understand that hopeful people, or people who understand that there are barriers, there are challenges that we, we, we will be confronted with, but we have what it takes to get on the other side of those challenges. You know, Stephanie and I, we like to consider ourselves, and even you, people like yourselves who are leaning into these kinds of conversations, we consider us, you, hope mongers.
Yeah.
We talk about hate mongers a lot in our society and not enough about hope mongers. I think it's far more hope mongers than there are hate mongers in our society. And so, again, hope is supporting all of this work.
So we'll continue to highlight and amplify some of these key principles, and even encourage and learn how you all are already perhaps adopters of many of these, maybe in your own way. And so, look for these pieces as we continue to move forward. So, I, I mentioned this term "operationalizing equity", and we'll talk about this as we move forward in it. But as we begin to think about ourselves, each of us, in each of our respective roles as being practitioners of equity, many of us who are privileged to be able to have a physician, a family physician, in our network, because it is indeed a privilege, not everyone has access to it. But we, we, I get delighted because my physician is practicing medicine. That means that they are still very much in the learner seat. You talk about being open, and, you know, some of our principles of equity talk about being open to new information.
Right.
And so, we will support each of, of those within the school district to really be thoughtful about what does being a practitioner of equity look like within your respective seat in your role, because we all have a role. And so, our approach to this work is in a four-part analysis, we call the four Ps. And so, pedagogy, and it's easy for us, and we, we might be even familiar with talking about pedagogy in the form of curricula, but we know, and in this case, it is so much more. We're talking about not only what we teach, but how we move and what drives us in it. So really asking ourselves, what are our guiding principles that guide us and move us through this work? And then our second P is policy. And that is where we will explore, how has equity been codified within New Hanover? And in, and I think it's just as important to ask, how has inequity been codified? So we'll be able to review with you all what that looks like. And then our third P.
Practice, you know, how are we implementing those policies, if you will? Because, you know, a, a lot of times, we can find, again, to Stephanie's point, inequity in our practices, even if our policies are equitable, we can perhaps find some instances of inequity being practiced in our, in our, and then, you know, in our, in our work environments. And then the last P, of course, is people, you know? What does our culture uphold? You know, because a lot of times, we can have good policies and even great strategies, and if our, and if our culture is not ready to absorb those strategies, then those strategies are for naught. That's why we say things, and, you know, and kind of leisurely, that, you know, culture is strategy for breakfast, right? Because a lot of times, we can have these wonderful strategies, but if the culture will not withstand that strategy, then, again, they're not productive. And so, that's why we have to examine the culture, we have to examine the people within an organization.
And the, the equity audit will really be helpful in that, in getting our various stakeholder voices and understanding, once again, getting proximate to what that experience has been. And so, what really guides this and drives us throughout this is this framework that is really steeped in understanding that diversity simply just is, it's a fact.
It's a fact.
That we all hold dimensions of diversity. Oftentimes, when we talk about diversity, we've even began to euphemize and say, "I'm looking for a diverse candidate", or different things like that. But the truth is, is that we all hold diversity. And so, how can we be clear about what is it that we are really lacking within our spaces? And if it's representation, especially specific identity representation, how can we be clear about that? Right? So doing the work and practicing acknowledging things so that we can adequately address it. And then, of course, belonging really being the outcome. It is, it is, it is the outcome of what all of this work comes, comes together to produce. Inclusion is our practice, it's how we get there. Equity being a clear choice, right? And knowing the difference between equity and equality. And then, of course, all of this being lifted up by justice. And so, we believe what takes, what helps us navigate this road is a common language and a shared perspective, and that helps drive us toward collective impact. So really closing the gap on what we say and what we do by being clear about what we believe, right? And what that means. And so, our equity audit will help us get closer and to being able to identify what perhaps are the various perspectives, and then provide a pathway for understanding how we can create a shared perspective so that we can have more sustainable impact. And then this, I, I love this because it looks so neat and clean, this linear, you know, graph that shows that we go from one to another. But as you all know, in real life, it is never this clean. Let me prepare you for it. But it is clear that learning and engagement is an important component. And so, we have been really encouraged by learning about all.
The training.
Yeah, the training.
Yes.
Many, I think, one partner or so that we even work with.
Yes.
Here in, in, in our, within our region. And so, being able to be, get really clear and leverage that common language that has already been established, and of course, strengthen it where it, it, it makes sense to do so. But also, you see this gathering materials, materials and understanding, introductions to the team and stakeholders. We are so excited to engage and meet with the families and with the caregivers. And caregivers, I mean, I'm, I'm talking about the teachers, the faculty and staff of the school district, and, and really beginning to work together. And then, as you can see, we move into this assessment and review, which is where the equity audit goes. Really being able to establish a baseline and really being able to understand what is going on. We have a lot of qualitative, quantitative, excuse me?
Yep.
We have a lot of quantitative information. And so, how can we allow this qualitative approach to give context to what? That's right. To be able to tell that story in a way, because we know numbers don't do it alone, but there's humanity within those numbers, and so how can we capture that? And then that moves us to operationalizing equity. And so, what does that mean? What existing or new work groups can be established so that we can? Who, who knows best how to really navigate, you know, the way forward? It is those that is actually in the midst of it. It is our very own faculty and staff members, our families, our students, and then, of course, you, being able to be part of this process. And so, we are, are all, are, we have great excitement in being able to help support and navigate that critical reflection as we move forward and really begin to create what we refer, we would refer to as a chart of work. This chart of work that will help us in our various ways really produce equity.
Yeah.
And then ongoing reporting, being able to share out, what you can expect from the equity audit report will not only be our observations that will come in the form of unnamed verbatim comments, but also recommendations. We'll synthesize the information and transcribe it, and we'll put it in, and, and present it in the form of emergent themes.
Right.
And then also, we will provide recommendations. And then, of course, work with community and the working groups to actually begin to bring it together, to operationalize the equity approach. And then, of course, this sustainability and impact. We believe that great things happen where interest and capacity intersect. And so, in some cases, there's a lot of interest and we need to build the capacity. In some cases, there is the capacity, but there has to be a raise and a rising of the interests to really truly understand what is happening. So our goal will be to have that nexus, to create that nexus, that intersection of interest and capacity so that it can actually be delivered or manifested within the behaviors of our various faculty and staff members that are within the district.
All in the effort to make an impact, all in the effort to change outcomes.
So we just shared a lot of information. Not only do we need to pause and breathe, but we also want to create space. I'm going to stop sharing the screen, if that's okay, so that we can hear your questions. Our emotional outbursts.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that presentation. We appreciate it. We're just, we're, we're all in awe right now. We think that's what it is. All right, can I open it up to the Board? Any questions or comments, Madam Chair? Yes, Dr. Boyer is about to go.
Dr. Boyer.
All right, Mr. Boyer.
I just wanted to thank you guys for this presentation. I particularly liked where you said, you know, this is, there is no quick fix. Because, you know, this isn't a problem that is insolvable. I just think it's a problem that has to continuously be solved. So even when we get there, even when we're done, there's more to do. And I just really appreciate your approach to this. I certainly am hopeful that this type of approach can, can meet the moment because we are in a moment, and I think this Board has focused a lot of effort on diversity over the last several years. And I appreciate all the work that Dr. Smith has done, that our Chair has done, and that everybody on the Board has done to, to make this happen. So thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Well, thank you so much. Well, thank you so much, yeah.
No, I was gonna say, can you repeat your name for me?
Oh, my name?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bullier. Bull, Bullier, I get that a lot. Think, think, think of it like bowl with a Y E R at the end, and you'll be fine.
Got you. Dr. Bullier, I wanted to call your name because you were speaking my language. I mean, it, it, it adds the language that we speak, that this notion that there is, there are no quick fixes to this work. That's right, and it actually is something that we do in perpetuity, is akin to, uh, our health assessment, you know? Making sure our cholesterol levels are in order all the time, you know? We can get them in order, but we have to keep them in order. So I, 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 I use that analogy to, 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 you know, to, to, to help me understand that this is ongoing work, this is in perpetuity, so.
Thank you, sir.
And I could, I appreciate the understanding, because oftentimes if we don't, um, have that, then we can sometimes want to put a programmatic solution on a systemic issue. So being able to understand where systems change is important, and then also how programmatic, um, offerings can, can work in tandem with that, I think will be key, so thank you so much.
I believe, Mr. Wilderbor.
I'd also like to, to echo that, thank you very much for your, uh, presentation this evening. Um, I'm, I'm wondering when, you know, timeline, what's, you know, what, what, what is on the horizon, I guess?
Great question. And so, um, what we wanted to do is be able to really hear you all's, um, questions and comments. Dr. Smith and I, uh, will be meeting next week, uh, to further outline, uh, the engagement. Um, with that, what that will entail is identifying, um, our various stakeholder groups. Of course, we'll come with a, a framework, um, but it's also important for us to be able to come in and listen.
Yes.
And understand, um, what is and what has been, um, so that we can, um, get some clarity on that. So we'll, um, put out a, a timeline that will include the engagement for the, um, individual and focus group discussions. Um, like I said, for this school year, we will make our way up to further, um, actually physically onsite, um, and follow all, um, health protocols, of course, um, in further understanding and getting proximate to some of the documentation and information, um, that is happening. It also gives us a chance, um, to, um, engage in community and see and connect and feel, um, which is such an important component of being able to hear people's story. Um, from that, we will, um, once all of the, or as the, um, the focus groups and interviews are taking place, we'll be transcribing as we go, um, and then we'll move into our actual writing, um, phase where we will put together, as I stated, um, and identify the emergent themes that we've heard, other observations, um, and put it in the form of recommendations so that we can have that, um, to you all. Um, and our hope, um, is that by summer, and I don't want to misspeak, um, as Dr. Smith, the other Dr. Smith, not this Dr. Smith, but this Dr. Smith will be a part of it. Uh, but how Dr. Smith, um, and her team and our team will get together to put that outline. But I am thinking, um, that, uh, we should be able to have, um, a report, at least the first phase of the, phasing of the report, um, by summertime. And since I said it out loud, then, then you all hold, hold accountable to it. Does that answer your question, though? I want to make sure that I'm.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Justice?
Oh, yeah, um, hello. Thank you very much for this presentation. Um, how much, background-wise, uh, do you come onto, into the school system? Um, your knowledge base when you first enter into this relationship where you start conducting your, I guess you could say, your information search? How much do you have ahead of time?
Are you asking how much information we have about New Hanover?
Yes, ac- yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, uh, of course, our own, uh, research, but that's why the engagement is so important, because we can, um, read and get all the, the data that is available.
Right.
Uh, that is publicly sourced, um, data as we can. But what we know is really important is what it feels like and what the interactions and what those other pieces are. The very same things that your faculty and staff across, uh, the, the county schools, um, and then also your students experience every day. And so when we talked about how belonging is the outcome, we see belonging and, and also what data, what research tells us is that belonging is a lucrative learning. And so being able to really, um, get the impression of belonging and what that feels like and how that impacts is extremely important. So we'll come in with our own, um, uh, you know, research and data. We've had the privilege of being able to interact, uh, with Dr. Faust, um, and Dr. Smith. But we know that there, um, is an expanded community that we want to make sure that we connect. We find it as a, um, as a privilege and an opportunity to be able to come in, um, with a third-person view, um, and not necessarily, um, be mired by, um, the history, but in, inclined to it, meaning open to understanding how, what has happened, um, has, is impacting what is. And so that's an extremely important component. And then also create room for community members to also be the writers of what can be. And so that's what we are excited for and, and looking forward to, um, throughout the conversations. But it'll be a mixture of what we understand and bring, and then, of course, what the interactions will be. That has given us really great opportunity in some of our previous engagements and relationships, who we, we, um, refer to our, um, clients, but as partners. Because that's really how we see this, is being in partnership, right?
Yeah, in addition to, you know, uh, hopefully getting, getting a chance to examine some of your quantitative data as well, um, you know, to examine for, for patterns, perhaps, you know, look at your academic outcomes, looking at your suspension rates, looking at who has, uh, historically been identified for your gifted education programs. Things, things of that nature will also, um, fuel, uh, our, our findings as well.
And I think we'll work on that now, how do those outcomes come to be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, yes, uh, now, I, I, you know, you can, we can go online and we can research the background of your company. I know that you said you had a social worker, uh, Ms. Smith, uh, social worker background. Dr. Smith, you said that you were a professor at a, a small private university, uh, what, what is?
Vice President of William Jewel College, but then also, uh, I teach at, I still have an adjunct professorship at UMKC, the University of Missouri, Kansas City, where I teach specifically in the School of Education. Um, where I specialize in courses, again, relative to this notion of diversity, equity, inclusion. Then I also teach some leadership and supervision-type classes. So my background has been in, uh, in education administration and supervision leadership.
Now, uh, we were lucky enough to have Dr. Faust, he was in Kansas City, Kansas. Did you get a chance to meet him when you were there?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely did, yes.
Um, well, so this is basically, you're coming in, and you're gonna be writing a type of strategic plan after you gather tons of information from all the different areas that you've described, using your expertise. I mean, is that just sort of a thumbnail and then help implement it?
Well, only because words matter, I'll, I'll make a revision to your statement, um, and, and not a strategic plan, but an equity audit that will, can be leveraged as a tool to determine what the next steps, uh, may be. And so part of our discussed, um, um, support to the district is, uh, equity audit that will also be accompanied, and we're really excited about how faculty and staff and community can pull together and will support a scorecard, um, so some, some key tools to be able to move us forward. So I'll just adjust the language from strategic plan to an equity audit, and then, of course, um, um, operationalizing equity, so that ongoing support, um, so that, uh, that the recommendations and other pieces can be supported in broad supervision.
About how many school systems have you worked with so far?
So we have worked with three school districts, one independent school, which is a private, um, school, and then, um, as far as in partnership, uh, but of course, on the volunteer basis, uh, not only does Rodney serve, um, as chair, um, of a, a charter school. Um, but I also support, um, in the, uh, foundation, actually both support in the foundation education, um, support of two school districts that are here regionally, um, within this area.
Thank you very much for all those answers.
All right, we are very quickly approaching our time limit. I actually think we have approached our time limit, um, for this item. And, um, I just want to say, um, is it Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Steph- Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, so we've got four, sorry, we've got three Stephanies on our board. So that's fantastic, so we'll just, we'll all Stephanie it out here.
Yeah.
I could've been a deal broker.
Well, that's why I'm glad I'm Stephanie, hey, you're not.
So, we thank you so much for your time, we're excited to work with you and, um, very excited to see the rollout and the equity audit that comes out of this as, as our district moves forward with this very important topic, so.
Well, thank you so much, appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I didn't want to ask it of them.
Yes, ma'am.
This was more for Dr. Smith and perhaps, um, our equity committee. So I was just, um, wondering, is this, um, something that the, that was developed out of the equity committee? Or was it that you've been working on this for a long time and now is just your, your time, um, to go?
So, um, what I'll say in regards to the equity audit, that is something that we've had, uh, multiple conversations about. But again, um, it really is about doing the right work at the right time with the right people. Um, um, as Dr. Faust has come into our district, he has brought with him just a plethora of knowledge. And so he has been able to connect us with the right people to do this work. And I think that it is the time right now, especially, that we need to engage in an equity audit and develop that equity scorecard for our school. So it, um, has been somewhat linear in its progression, um, but not completely.
Okay, so it's, it's kind of a joint effort with the equity committee, um, ish, or is it?
So it's all interrelated, so if we go back to our very early documents, um, there is reference to an equity audit.
Okay.
But again, right time, right people, right resources, and Dr. Faust has, um, brought that to us.
And so is there a way that, that, um, on, on Simbly, when I was looking it up, you know, to try to follow along, all I got was, um, a lot of words and the letter to you. I didn't get a chance to see their PowerPoint and I was, and, or the guiding principles, and I was trying to scribble it all down, is that something that you could share with us?
So if you would like to, I can make that request, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I can email you separately as a reminder if you want me to, but I just thought it was interesting and wanted to read it.
And there's, and a lot of that's on their website, too.
Okay, but I didn't know, I didn't know if it was personalized to us or not, so I was just scribbling, you know, as they were going. Um, and then that book, Jess Mercy, is that a, a book club kind of thing you guys are doing? Or, I mean, like, how come they put that up there? Cause I was gonna download it and listen to it while I walked.
So I've, I've read the book personally, um, I've watched the movie personally. Um, but that is not a book study that we've done within the district. But if you go back to our, um, overarching documents in terms of our district strategy, we have aligned ourselves with the work of Brian Stevenson.
Okay.
Um, in terms of getting proximate to the problem, um, in other things that were mentioned. So it's not unique to New Hanover County, and I would say it's also not unique to, to them. It is, um, undergirding and work around equity. And, you know, I could talk for a very long time about Brian Stevenson, but I won't.
Okay, but it, but it, it's a good book for us to, I guess, to just to.
I would recommend it to you highly, yes. Uh, Dr. Smith, has?
Thank you.
Uh, the, the equity committee, was this a discussion among the equity committee, or is this new information for them? So we have, um, the equity committee, we have the equity work group, and again, as I've said, we've not talked explicitly about this proposal, but we have previously, and again, bringing that to our very earliest work with this, talked about the need for an equity audit. Um, has it been a part of a recent discussion? No, um, but it very much aligns with our work, um, and is something that will continue to move us forward, um, in bringing greater equitable opportunities for all students.
It sounds great.
Yeah, all right, thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Next item up for information is Scribbles Records Management, and I believe that we are going to invite, oh, it looks like Ms. Jackson's coming up, not Ms. Barnum. Welcome, Ms. Kristen Jackson.
Good evening, Dr. Faust, Madam Chair at the Board of Education. Great story, last June, we realized that we probably were not going back to school face-to-face. And I got the directive to find a company that can get all of our enrollment online in three weeks. And so tonight I'd like to introduce you to a company called Scribbles. They're going to give you a brief presentation, uh, of what we're doing to be more effective and efficient in our student enrollment, our re-enrollment process, um, choice applications, student records management, and our historical transcripts and records. Um, we're doing this, is time for us to digitize our process. And this will allow the community to get better access to all of our services, and also it is in many different languages, so it makes the enrollment process much easier for our families. Tonight I have Ron Christensen and Mike Fitzgivens with me, and they are from Scribbles, and they're gonna give you a brief overview of what we've already implemented this year and services we're looking at as we move forward. Hi, Ron and Mike.
Hey, how are you doing, guys? Uh, first of all, thank you very much, uh, Dr. Faust and, uh, members of the board, appreciate the time. Feel free to ask me questions as we go through. Can I also share my screen, is that okay? I've got a little presentation in here. Let's see, let's share my screen. Can everybody see my screen okay?
We can see you with the Scribbles logo behind you.
Yeah, okay, can you see my screen? Can you see the presentation? So, everybody see that okay?
Yep, you are not in presentation mode right now, you're in slide mode. There you go.
How's that? Are we good?
Yeah.
Wonderful, well, thank you, uh, so, I, I look like the background, the background looks like my presentation, so there we go. Again, thank you very much for your time today. Um, you know, we started off this, this journey at Scribbles, and it's interesting, I hear equitable, uh, equity and equitable access a lot, and, but that's our mantra, really, is to enhance family experience uh, through equitable access to school district resources. That's, that's what our motto is for our company. And we do that through what we call Student Life Cycle Solutions, you know? And when you look at Scribbles, just a quick background for those of you who don't know who we are. We're based in, uh, Pineville, uh, we have, you know, uh, employees all over the country, but we now have a hundred and fifteen people in the state of North Carolina serving, uh, almost ninety LEAs. So we have a massive commitment, uh, to the state of North Carolina, working with DPI very closely on the technologies to, that, that provide that equitable access that we continue to talk about. All of our applications, um, uh, when we talk about equity, they're SaaS, so there's no, there's no, um, there's no need for your IT really to get involved when it comes to supporting these applications. We do all the support ourselves out of our office in Pineville. Um, we serve a lot of schools just across the country, so we, we, we focus a lot of the experiences that we see. Kansas City were just interesting there, that, that was a very interesting, uh, presentation by the Smith family. That we serve Kansas City schools, um, right in their backyard, and all over the country, working with, with families to engage, uh, school districts. When we look at, um, Scribbles, again, about that equitable access, um, we know that, boy, during COVID, everybody needed, uh, flexibility, and one of the things that we saw certainly in North Carolina when, when there were shutdowns, um, the school districts that, you know, we served and even some that we didn't at the time, uh, really needed to go online, right? There was no way to actually get applications to people, there's no way to get records to people. There's nobody there to process the work, let alone to have the families drop off enrollment applications and things of that nature. So, let's get back to normal a little bit and, and fast forward even a year from now. What does that really mean? We still need to focus and, focus our energies on modernizing school districts because it's good for, good for the students, it's good, it's good for the families, it's good for the children as they progress from kindergarten all the way through post-graduation. So one thing we know is families, your families require flexibility. And we know that through our applications, because even pre-pandemic, eighty percent of the applications were completed after five o'clock on a smartphone. So what that tells us is we have a lot of single families, working families, dual-working families, where people can't come into the school and take that hour or two or three that it takes to complete an enrollment process, for example, to complete their application. So we wanted to create one hundred percent online enrollment for, for the school districts we serve. And in doing so, we have to do things like language translation. You have a number of languages, not just English, Spanish, a lot of different languages that are being spoken in your, in your, um, county school. We, we serve a hundred and nine different languages today. And like, as I just spoke to, the mobile phone, uh, friendly application is also a key component of that. But along with that is, okay, equitable access is fantastic, but it still has to, we still have to be concerned with. But along with that is, okay, equitable access is fantastic, but it still has to, we still have to be concerned with security of the information, the student's information, the family information, as well as the quality. So we run through rigorous testing through a SOC 2 audit. We're a FERC compliant organization. And we comply with all the different rules and regulations within the United States government. So when we think about, you know, the experience and the family experience, enhancing that experience through an equitable process, it's really about remote, touchless access, right? So an example I give a lot of times is, I'm a father of four. And when we do an enrollment process, and some of my kids are older, way out of college, when we did that process early on, we had to fill out paper forms. And then they would go to kindergarten, then they would give the kindergartner 10 forms that they bring home to mom and dad for them to fill out. And then they had to bring it back home to them, right? Well, today, that should be a thing of the past for school districts. We can do all of this online. You can use your phone. You can make things very efficient and effective for them. And that's what Scribbles is providing to New Hanover, right? So the whole idea is, all those manual, paper-intensive processes that are in a school district, we want to automate them for you and your families. We call it Student Life Cycle Solutions, and you're already doing this today. We started with enrollment during the pandemic. And the enrollment is becoming 100% online. This year it will be with the adoption of our electronic forms and getting all the forms and the things that need to be signed by the parents. Uploading the documents automatically through the enrollment application is a big part of it. Your proof of domicile, your residency information, birth certificate. Getting all that information loaded into the application online is very important, right? Then also, we do know that school choice is running around the Carolinas in a very big way. So whether it's a dual-language immersion program or a STEAM program, STEM program, we do know that parents want options. And we would like, for all the school districts we serve, to have their students stay within the public school system in their counties, not going to different counties because they offer maybe a better STEM program or they offer a fine arts-focused program. We do know that the choice is something that parents are looking for today, so we're automating that process for you as well. The next piece of what we're talking about here is really a records component, right? So the top part is really about family engagement, online enrollment, school choice options for families, completing forms online, getting the family experience done and making it online. The next piece that we really talk about is, that we're moving to with you, is the record side of it, okay? So once we have a student, let's say a student moves within your district, right? So the student would have records. And those records today would be carted throughout the district manually. We do this all now electronically, whether they're within the district or going outside of the district. We can do all of this electronically today, and we should be doing it electronically today. We do this through a record request application. That way, a student, if they need a copy of their transcript to go to UNC or Duke or NC State, whatever your allegiance is, you can send that transcript electronically, automatically, whether you're 18 years old or you're a 42-year-old wanting to go back to school, to a community college. Everything can be done electronically and should be done electronically. Furthermore, we're using technology called blockchain. And what blockchain does is, it'll provide the ability for your graduates to have co-ownership of their own record. So you could, in fact, optionally, you don't have to do this, but you could, in fact, give your student a virtual wallet with their own record. So that way, if they go to get a job or go to the military or want to apply to college, they don't need to ask you for that record. They have their own record intact, right? Medical field's been doing this now for many years. We used to have to go back and ask for our medical records. Now we can have our own medical records at our, at our fingertips. The student record can be the same way, and we believe that's the future. So when we look at the record request, and the document management being the core of it, today we're managing about 80% of the former student records in the state of North Carolina, predominantly because we have Cumberland and Wake and Charlotte Mecklenburg and Guilford. We have a lot of very, very large school districts. We've taken paperless. We're going to do the same thing, and our goal is to do the same exact thing, repeating what we've done at Union and the others for New Hanover schools, right? And the whole idea here is, if it's a piece of paper, let's create it electronic and never make it a piece of paper again, right? If a student is enrolling, let's not print off the information. If it's born electronic, let's keep it electronic, secure it, and make it a part of their electronic cumulative file as they go through their educational journey. So the thing about Scribbles online is, it was designed and developed specifically for school districts. So we're going to manage the students, but we're also going to manage your HR records and your finance records, making everything in a paperless world. Furthermore, we're, we're a scanning company as well. So we offer conversion services where we come in, we pick up your records, not only with a software company, but we do the work for you as well. So we'll come in and box up and pick up all your records from your schools so that way, all the former students, for example, might be stored electronically outside of the school. We'll pick them up, we'll scan them in, and protect those records automatically for you. So we're not just a software company, we're also providing the service to taking paperless. So from our perspective, it's about family engagement, providing equitable access and enhancing student service, right? So from enhancing the family experience, providing a self-service to those families, making it easy and instant for them to be able to do things without having a printer, using their mobile phone. A lot of people don't have computers today. They're using their smartphones to do things online, right? It saves a lot of time and frustration over paper-based processes, and it's very secure and organized. So we, we talked about, you know, spending less time on paperwork and spending more time supporting your families. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Fantastic, thank you. Open up the board.
Oh, wait, all right, hold on. Ms. Craybill?
Ms. Craybill, why don't you start?
I'm older and beautiful, so I'll go first. Sorry. All right, so my, my question was, how, this is a great system, and I'm all for it. How would a student or parent go about disputing something that might be in their, in their report? Like your FICO score, if you see something in there that you don't think to be accurate. I mean, obviously you can't change it because you're not allowed, but is, does that have some sort of component in it about that?
Well, yeah, so they could, because they're going to have access to the record, right? There would be, there would be a way to vet that back to the school, be that at the school itself or to the central office, right? So yeah, there's certainly a component of that, for sure.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Justice?
Well, I was, I worked in schools for decades. It's about time. I wish it hadn't taken a pandemic to do this. This is so current and needed, so thank you very much. And those that found this group, thank you.
Is it, your question, you're saying, just a comment?
I'm just happy to see this. I've been, when I was in schools, and this was decades ago, I was thinking, we need something like this. This is back in the 90s and, yeah, whatever.
Great, all right, Ms. Muller.
I certainly agree. I'm sitting here thinking, oh, man, this is cool. I must be getting nerdy in my old age. I just had a question about the transferability of records to a digital platform. How are you able to maintain the confidentiality of those records while you're transforming them?
Right, so there's a couple of things. Number one, you know, we were a central business during the pandemic, too. So we also have all the levels of certification. We go through a SOC 2 report. And we have background checks on all of our employees, right? So one of the things we do when we box up all the records, if there, if there's sensitive information in those records, we'll have a subset of, a team that will work on those records and digitize those. Once they've been digitized, they then move to a safe, secure location or they're returned back to you. So there's very, it's either going to go from your warehouse within hours, it's going to be back at our warehouse, especially since you're in North Carolina, right? So the security of those and the transport of those is going to be a secured method, right? Obviously, we're going to, if it's paper, we're going to come pick them up, right? If it's electronic record, we would do everything we could in terms of security. We use AES 256 encryption, for example. That's a Department of Defense standard for, for document encryption. So we, we have the most rigorous standards imaginable for both, both scanning and process and, and the people that we're vetting, as well as the technology that underlies it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, I have a question about, so they're going to be, is there a backup? Or do you have any issues that you foresee for hacking or anything like that? I know some systems, they have a problem with that.
Yeah, that's a very good question. Yeah, so we have, because of our SOC 2 audit, we work with a company at Riley, it's a third-party auditing firm. Oh, boy, I'm going to forget. I'll provide that information.
Lazarus.
Yeah, Lazar, Lazarus, okay, very good. They, they're the ones who actually do the audits for us, so when we look at that information. But yes, we always have full, five full backups of your data in three different geographic locations. So if there was a catastrophe happen in one area, you're always going to have a full backup somewhere else. We'll even provide you a backup so you can have a hard drive of your information, as well as should you wish. So, yeah, from a backup perspective, that's certainly the case. We also have, I always tell people, you know, we put processes in place so that way bad things don't happen, right? But you got to have, you know, a plan in place in case something does. And we have, for example, a breach plan, right? If something were to happen where there's a breach, we have a whole policy around how you manage your breach. Fortunately, we've never had one, right? But those things can happen, right? And then when all else fails, you have to make sure you have insurance per occurrence to make sure that when one and two fail, that you're covering the school district as well as ourselves to make sure that, you know, if there's punitive damages, they're paid out, okay? We don't like to talk about insurance, though, but we have, we have $5 million of incurred, each occurrence is $5 million in occurrence. Yeah.
So this would be a contract for X amount of years? And do you update data like every year, every month? Or, I mean, is there like where your information is directly sent to you? It's all put in your system straight away?
Right, yeah. So it, it is. So it comes in a variety of, there's, there's different types of information, right? We get pieces of paper that have to be scanned in. But there's also information in Power School, for example, that we can extrapolate out of Power School and auto-load into the system. That's done real time. We have a partnership with DPI where ultimately we'll be feeding the operational data store within North Carolina DPI as opposed to just feeding Power School. We'll be working with the data store, okay? So yes, to answer your question, it's, it's a secured method. We do everything, like you said, with this AES 256 encryption. It's at progress and in transit.
I have a question, and I have a feeling it's probably for Ms. Jackson rather than Scribbles. Obviously, this is, this is functioning under the assumption that everyone has access to a computer or cellphone, but that's not necessarily the case, and we also have some families that may not be technologically savvy. What are we doing for them for like the enrollment form? I know we're getting rid of the green sheet, which is amazing, but what are we going to do for the families that use that green sheet and are paper-based people?
Right. We all love the green sheet. So we have put a lot of thought into that, and we have trained everybody in the front offices on how to help parents through that process. So you can still present in person to register your child for, for school, but instead of handing you the packet, we're going to hand you an iPad and walk you through that process. In addition, we are, we are planning, within the next month, to have a drive-through enrollment here in the parking lot where parents who want to come by on a Saturday and enroll their children in kindergarten or pre-K can come through, and we'll have tables set up, and they can do it right from their car, take them the iPad and walk them right through it. The best, one great thing about this is, we always have trouble gathering documents from parents. This allows the parent to actually just take a picture of the birth certificate or the immunizations, and it uploads right into the program. So not only is it more effective for us, the parents like it because it's much easier for them than coming to the school. I mean, they do have to take work off a lot of times to come and enroll their kids, so, you know. We, we've really brainstormed ways to still make families feel welcome. Of course, we'll still have open houses and all those sorts of things, but how can we, in this time, electronically or through the mail or through packets or postcards, keep families engaged while they're enrolling their kids in school? And let them know that we're happy to have them and we're ready to serve their kids.
Great, thank you. The technology's fantastic, and I applaud the district for, for getting us there. This is going to be fantastic. All right, any other questions before we move on?
Have you ever thought about maybe even enrolling at some of our pre-K centers, you know, for, for kindergarten? Like as a parent night or something, come and enroll?
We do, we do. They, pre-K enrolls in kindergarten. And actually, pre-K started the Scribbles before kindergarten this year. So pre-K has already processed 500 applications online through Scribbles in the last month.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations, that's a good job.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time tonight. We know it's a late evening to be here presenting, so we appreciate you. And we look forward to utilizing the software. All right, next item up is Head Start, our Head Start Board Liaison Report. Mr. Bullion.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. I think Ms. Miles and I were discussing the possibility of moving this to a consensus item for our next agenda, as much as I know that you love to see me every month. This information is required to be presented by law, but you have it before the board meeting. So I would like to ask you guys, if you have any questions about the data that we present every month, please ask me. I would like to briefly mention that pre-K is taking the lead on this with, with Scribbles. All of our applications are filtered through Scribbles. And with that, I'll just briefly discuss some of the highlights unless there are questions about our monthly financial reporting. Okay, let's see, we've had healthy snack bags provided to students to take home. Bags included snacks provided by Nourish and C and a cutout of the food pyramid with healthy snacks, snack ideas in the back. We had our pre-K Vertical Team Collaborative on 2/24 facilitated by Johnson Pre-K in collaboration with Snipes, Sunset Park Mostly, Gregory, Freeman, and Howe. Reading centers are ready for guest readers. Teachers are scheduling and preparing for conferences with parents on February 18th and 19th. Conferences will be done in different ways, such as through Zoom outside the building or outside the parent's home, keeping in mind everybody's safety, of course, is a priority. School principal was notified of a grant awarded by Team First Book to provide two books to keep for all students. Schools submitted all paperwork to obtain funds, and will begin the purchasing process. 82% of our program slots are filled, and we are currently enrolling students for the 2021-2022 school year. If there are no questions, this will conclude my liaison report with my thanks, as always, to Ms. Miles.
All right, any questions, comments? All right.
Thank you, Ms. Bullion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Faust.
New Hanover County Schools celebrated African-American History Month throughout February with numerous activities that included members of the community who participated in the middle school Black History Quiz Bowl, classroom meetings, classroom readings, career panel discussions, and other events honoring African-American History Month. I had the opportunity to participate in many of the activities, and I was quite pleased with how schools had found creative ways to, to and for students to engage in African-American History Month. The district is making great progress in partnership with New Hanover County Public Health and New Hanover Regional Medical Center with our employees receiving the COVID-19 vaccine. The first vaccine clinic for the initial dose was last Wednesday. Another clinic will be held tomorrow with an anticipated, with anticipating, we are anticipating over 1,600 employees to receive their first shots. The vaccines are available for all employee groups, including substitute teachers. The Rookie of the Year Celebration was held on February 12th. And the district honored Carolina Beach Elementary first-grade teacher Abby Emerson, who received a $1,000 award by the Wilmington Rotary Club. Congratulations again to Ms. Emerson. Keep up the great work. As we enter into the final grading period for the 2021 school year, our pre-K centers and elementary schools will roll out Plan A on March 8th, offering face-to-face instruction five days a week. I also encourage all students and staff to stay on course and finish strong during these last nine weeks. A lot of successful, creative work is being accomplished in all of our schools. And lastly, a reminder that the district's spring break will be April 5th through the 9th. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Faust. Next item on the agenda is Board Chairperson's Report. I feel like a broken record, but I, again, just want to thank the partnership between the County Health Department, our county commissioners, and the central office staff with student support that has worked around the clock to make vaccines a possibility for our teachers. It's been an incredible couple of weeks to see, so thank you for that. Secondly, I just would like to share that the Student Scholarships for Future Teachers is open, the application right now. The board awards four scholarships a year for possible future teachers in New Hanover County schools. And it is $7,000 a year for a total of $28,000 for the scholarship. We are currently accepting applications through March 15th. We are currently accepting applications through March 15th. If you are interested in applying, please speak with your counselor to learn about that. And it is also on our website under the Board of Education page under the tab for Student Scholarships for Future Teachers. We want to keep the best here in New Hanover County. So if you are considering a career in education, please take a look for our high school seniors. Next item on the agenda, Committee Reports, and we are going to turn to Ms. Judy Justice to give us an update on the board agenda ad hoc committee. Ms. Justice?
Okay, yes, and we know that this is needed, look at the time now. The purpose of the committee is to revise the current meeting schedule and format so it better meets the needs of our community, and I saw that in policies, we're gonna be looking at it a little bit later. We did discuss, we met, and we discussed the number and types of meetings. Some of them that we discussed were to having two general meetings a month, and I do believe, in fact, that's what we discussed mainly, we should have two meetings a month because of all the business we have. In fact, very few governmental bodies at this point across the state don't. Now, the thing is to find the best way to designate how that's going to work and where the focus is going to go. There has been a suggestion to also look at the agenda item meetings, which is something the county commissioners do here. They have two meetings a month, and then about two days, they have an agenda item meeting two days before their meeting where they have all the people that are needed, not just the county commissioners, but all the people that, from their staff that needs to put input. And then they meet together during the day, and then they have the two meetings of the month. And that's something that we're looking at also and trying to figure out how to arrange that if we do decide to do that. One of the decisions or discussions that we have, and this is probably something that's just as important as how long these meetings go, is a problem that we've had with having our meeting the same night as the, in this case, it's a city council meeting, which also actually takes place also on Tuesdays. And then according to state statute, if we meet, we're supposed to be meeting on Monday nights unless there's a reason we can't. And right now, the reason we're not meeting on Monday nights is because the county commissioners are meeting. So there is a discussion about figuring out some way, either shifting the weeks, though we've already pretty much eliminated trying to change the days, changing it in such a way that it works with the general office staff, who also need to be present to answer questions and help both with the agenda meeting and these meetings, and what we're doing now. So that's work we're going to be looking into, and that's why, unfortunately, we could not make any decisions right away. This is, that was, I guess, our first meeting? That was our first meeting that we had, but we did cover a lot. As I said, policy is also part of this, but policy actually will come about, and this is the way it's decided, from school board decisions. So we're trying to gather all the information we can to present to you. So you can assess what is best for the district and then make a decision. And from there, the policy, even though we're looking at something tonight, might even change further down the line in the next, I would hope, in the next couple of months, because we need to do this as fast as possible. Right now, we have four people on the committee, myself, Mr. Buller, Dr. Smith, thank you very much, Dr. Smith, and Dorian Cromarty, who is actually a member of our community and is very involved with the schools. And so we're trying to get all kinds of voices without making it too big that we can't get something done rapidly. We do want to do this pretty fast. So, and by the way, any of you other board members, you've already said a lot about the meetings being hopefully long. You've heard what I just said, and you've thought about this, too. We're gonna talk about it later in policy, because we will be changing the format in that we'll probably roll into what we end up doing. But think of what you think would be the best way we do this. I want your input, too, because you're the guys that are gonna be in this also, okay? And, you know, you don't have to come to the meeting to give it to us, just give it to us and then, you know, individually, and then we can talk about it, or you can come to meetings. The meetings are open to the public. They're gonna be done Zoom, so please come and view it. And if you have any input, please let us know, because this is a very important decision so we can make good decisions. Because about this time of night now, if we have to make any heavy decisions, I dare say it's probably not the best because of the length of the day and all, you know, everybody has had a full day already, okay? Yes, was there any questions? I saw your hand up there.
Yeah, Ms. Justice, when's your next meeting?
Pardon?
When is the next meeting?
Oh, I have it written down. It is, let me see if I have the sheet of paper I have. Do you happen to have it, Dr. Smith? Yeah, because I noticed the piece of paper I have with me isn't the one I wrote it down on. Sorry about that, she did make notes up there.
It's March 10th, okay?
Thank you very much. So please, if you'd like to view and give input, but we, you know, we want to work on this and focus on this and get it done, because I know everybody here would benefit from a different format than we have now, okay? So, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Justice. Next item on the agenda, Consensus Items Personnel Report, Dr. Coker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. I would like to present to you the personnel report for your approval, the period covering January 26th, 2021 to February 25th, 2021.
All right, is there a motion to approve the personnel report? Mr. Bullier is our second. Thank you, Mr. McManus, I think one of you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, personnel report is approved. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, in old business, Policies for Second Reading, Policy Committee Chair, Mr. Bullier.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. We have several policies on the agenda. I know we discussed many of them during first reading. Just to call the board's attention to Policy 4316, a new student dress code, but I know everybody would probably like to begin with a discussion of Policy 4300, and to that end, Ms. Crabill and I have asked Ms. Varnum to draft some different language to amend Policy 4300. So if you could pull that up, and we will discuss. And I believe the same exact language will be added to Policy 4351 as well.
On the right side, about four of that.
What's that? Ms. Crabill, did you see, did we put it in there?
We, the, um...
I know we added it, did we actually add it into this?
I guess we didn't, we didn't add it.
Yeah, it's not.
Can you pull up the email? Do you have it? I can pull up the email.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so let me find Julie. Okay, so in this, where we would change, we would add additional wording. Everything else that you see in the policy online in assembly stands as stands. But if you go to, it's on page three, section D, Consequences for Violations, number one, under Minor Violations, actually, yeah, and in paragraph two, right, the first sentence says violations of the Code of Student Conduct may result in disciplinary measures or responses up to and including short-term suspension. And after that, we would add the words, "Teachers and students deserve school environments that are safe, supportive, and conducive to learning. Creating a supportive school and climate and decreasing suspensions requires close attention to the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all students. School administrators will utilize positive behavior support alternatives to suspensions and only use out-of-school suspensions as a last resort."
Thank you, Ms. Crabill, and I'll just briefly begin by thanking Mr. Wildenbauer, thanking our attorney, Ms. Stagger, thanking Ms. Crabill. When these policies come to us, they have been vetted by the North Carolina School Boards Association, they have been vetted by their legal team, they've been vetted by our legal team, they've been vetted by our administration, and what you see, what we see in the policy committee is our first look at them. So we're not just throwing these together. I want to publicly associate myself with every remark that some of our speakers have made with regards to a huge problem with equity in terms of short-term suspensions. That being said, I do not believe in any blanket policy, and I think it's important. I think there are moments where it is actually beneficial to a student to have a day, have two days. And Mr. Wildenbauer added language to make sure that when that student comes back, that we have processes in place to bring them back and reintroduce them, have a good conversation. I definitely share the concerns. I don't believe that the best solution in this case is a blanket policy. So with that, you know, I'm open to any discussion on Policy 4300 and that added language.
Well, I would like to just speak to, you know, that part that I did ask to be added in, you know, to suspend a child and then just to bring them back to a classroom just doesn't make a lot of sense. But bring them back, to support them, to find out, you know, to, obviously, I think we want to be proactive on the front end and be able to come up with another solution. And that's why I think that the wording is, it makes a lot of sense to say as a, you know, a total last resort. But I think it is also important that on those few occasions when that has to happen, that we are able to support that child upon reentry, and in the families, too. You know, maybe bring the families in and talk through those situations.
Ms. Justice?
Well, I agree that a blanket statement is not, at this point, useful just because we don't have systems in place to make that statement be able to be carried out in an effective way. It's, we need a lot in this district as far as training, understandings, systems in place so that from, you can even go back to the pre-K centers. From the time kids enter school, the teachers, the staff, the students, the families, they need to all be working together in the same goal. And one thing is definitely not to have kids out of school. But there's so many different things that we are not implementing that are known. Some of them, some people have talked about it today, we've received emails about it. There's an awful lot that we could be doing that we're not doing, and there was an awful lot that was known in this district for many decades and was not implemented. When I was here in the 90s, we were doing some of the similar training that was just talked about tonight. After an election, I think, after I left, things went away. A lot of it is sadly politics, and I don't want that to be here, because we're not, you know, I don't think we're here for political reasons, we're here for the kids. We do need to, I mean, right now, we can revisit policy, but this is something that we need to put on our radar right now and keep on our radar. We need to have all these different understandings of how to effectively work with kids of all races. And we need to look at who our teachers are, who our schools are, what our culture is, what we're implementing now, what we need to be implementing, how we're working with the community, how we're working with the kids. That's very complex, it isn't easy. So a blanket statement isn't going to answer the problem, the problem is complex. I would say let's get a committee together. We already have one, the Equity Committee to a certain extent. But we need a commitment from this board to do this right. We need a commitment from everybody in this district to do this right. And that's what these people were asking for tonight. We need to start doing this right by all of our kids, because we haven't been. Those statistics scream, and it's a problem across the country. It really is. This is not just New Hanover County that's got this problem. And it's, you know, part of it is race, but there's also socioeconomic factors, cultural factors. So, you know, as I said, a blanket statement, you can't implement it if you don't have the tools to do it right. I agree. But we do need to definitely revisit this, and I think maybe the best people right now to take it up is the Equity Committee, but you need to, you know, from this whole board, we need a commitment to do what's right by our kids.
I support the statement that Ms. Crabill shared this evening, and I would like to see that added into the policy.
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe we will also add it into 4351 as well.
Right, and then, and she showed us where that would be, we can show them if people want to look at that. But one thing I wanted to mention, too, that also came from this discussion is that this has, is a priority from Dr. Faust and Julie Varnum in her department and LaShawn Smith in her department. It's a priority for everybody, but we, we can't have, at this point, in my opinion, we can't have a no-suspension policy at this point in time, no suspension at all, without any programming and training to do that. Because if we were to start it tomorrow, what would we do with a child that might be suspended for, you know, personal, for personal safety reasons? We might unintentionally be putting a child right into the prison-to-school pipeline, school-to-prison pipeline that we're trying so hard to work our way out of with the justice partnership. So, you know, Dr. Faust has had meetings with, you know, community members, with the NAACP. Every teachers, you know, there's lots of training that needs to go, and every comment that was made by the folks from the audience tonight has also been discussed, from my understanding, in central office work teams with Dr. Faust, with the community. So your comments are all spot on, and we recognize that. But like Ms. Justice said, we can come back and change the wording, perhaps when we have some plans that we can do something positive. Everything you said was noted, it's already on the radar. So that is kind of where the policy committee was, because we discussed that, you know, in the policy, and we've discussed it outside the policy, Equity Committee has discussed it. So, but I did also want to sort of reiterate that we, there's two different suspension issues that we're dealing with in the middle of this no-suspension policy. We're dealing with the process of suspending any kid, but we're also compounded with the, the kids who are suspended, there is a disproportionate amount of minority students being suspended. So that's a, it's not a separate issue, but it's an issue within an issue. So there's lots of different things that we have to put in place. And I don't feel like anybody in this room, at this table, at those tables, in the community disputes any of that. So that's why the statement for right now and no suspension is being offered to the board for consideration.
Well, there's no other discussion. Thank you very much, Ms. Crabill. Dr. Faust, Ms. Varnum, thank you very much for your leadership and for taking all those meetings this past week. I will entertain a motion at this time to adopt Policy 4300, 4351, and the remaining policies up for second reading as amended.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second, all right, any other discussion?
Ms. Curious, I think the discussion, I was just, centers around, I know there's a lot of good work in time you guys have put into this with the wording, and I think that's really well noted. I just, I feel like, I don't know, it's definitely not set in stone. Policies are things that we can change and craft later on, especially as we get to our strategic planning, we get the work done with the equity audit and the groups that we're working with. And then I say we revisit this, probably by summer, maybe, even when we have some more information and some more things that we can get from the community input-wise, and we can revisit it if we need to.
And also all the different programs that we've talked about bringing in to train, to understand, to deliver support, help, all those things need to be included in this, so I agree with Stephanie.
And you talk to the stakeholders and teachers, yeah?
And also, just so folks know, that we talked about this last time, but we couldn't approve any of the 4300 series without having 4300, because every one of them referenced 4300. And we are required by state statute to have a discipline policy, so we are working hard to get that discipline policy passed, which is, you know, 4300. And then all of those kinds of things go into a student handbook, Code of Conduct, whatever we call it, and that is required to be available to every student and family at the beginning of the school year. So we have, everything is sort of, the wheels are all rolling, so we've got to do that. And we did take a hard look at all the other policies as far as, and they are, they're just dealing with behaviors in general. So that, and they all link back to 4300. So just so folks know, that we did, two different times, look through the 4300 series. The central office looked at it first, policy committee looked at it second with the guidance of central office. Then, and then we brought it for first reading, and then we went back and we looked again based on conversation. So these have been looked at several different times. So we're not hastily going through and saying, let's just broad stroke these. We've looked at them, we've had, you know, Deborah look at them, we've had McKenna from the North Carolina School Boards Association. So we are in line with what we're doing right now, and it's sort of given us our guideposts on where we need to go with training, so just so folks know that.
So if I can just clarify, because there are multiple policies that are listed here as part of this motion. This is the 4,000 series, is that correct? It's policies from January 12th, February 2nd, and then additional policies from December 8th and February 2nd and January 5th.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. The first and the second.
Just for clarification?
Yes.
Didn't you say 4300, that was your motion, or did you say all of them?
And the additional.
All of these policies.
Is there another one we can talk about, or is this?
Which one would you like to discuss?
Well, I know one...
Well, I know one was brought up about the restraint, seclusion and restraint, I didn't know if we needed that discussion.
So again, I would go, I mean, I'm happy to have that discussion, I didn't feel a need, and I don't think there was an appetite among the Policy Committee to change it. Somebody said you guys are going, or mentioned that we were going fast, I can promise you, and if anybody who watches, anybody who watches our board meetings would totally believe that we are going excruciatingly slow through these policies, we are being extremely detailed. So when we bring them forward to you, I mean, definitely asked the question, but we were very comfortable with what we saw there, but I, you know, I appreciate the concern, but we were comfortable.
Well, maybe this is a good time to have a discussion about restraints.
And we can absolutely have that discussion, but please lead it, I wasn't prepared for that, nobody asked me to pull that policy for discussion.
Do you know what the number is, so I can look it up for our discussion?
Forty-three oh two dash R.
Okay, yeah, let's look it up for discussion.
I won't really have much to add to it.
Well, restraints can be under wrong hands, used by the wrong people, extremely dangerous. I know, I've seen it done, and I've seen kids hurt. And I'm also very concerned about these restraint rooms, this is the first district I ever worked in, and I've worked in many other districts, and I've talked to other people that has these restraint rooms, they're leftover from the past. I just have a little, a lot of concern about our behavior around restraints. So that was, let's see, say that again?
Yes, Ms. Stagner.
I would just say that the policy that is been presented tracks the legal requirements for seclusion and restraint in North Carolina, and that law was adopted to address some of the abuses that were occurring, they got a lot of publicity nationwide. Several years ago, the state adopted this statute to address different types of restraint and seclusion, and our, the policy that's been presented really tracks that statute. So, you know, I can, I've got the statute here if there are any questions, but I, and I think probably someone like Ms. Varnum could, could address the substance of it.
She would. Are our principals trained in restraint, in passive restraints? Oh yeah, go ahead, yeah, because I do want to know more about this. We would or not, this sort of became an area I found a lot about over my career.
Yes, so we have teams at each school that are trained, and most often it does include administrators, at least one administrator in the building, and then also other student support staff. And the training happens annually through Crisis Prevention Institute.
All right, but not all of our principals are trained in restraint, the passive safety?
Right, so I can't necessarily tell you that every single principal and every single assistant principal are trained, it might be the case in most schools, but at least one of them is. But we do make sure that every school has administrators and student support staff trained. They have a team of trained folks in every building.
One of the parents did bring up something about possible tie downs with students, is that something that we do?
We do not use mechanical restraint. Did you say tie down?
Or some kind of?
Okay, so I think what was, what was spoken about was mechanical restraint. We do not use mechanical restraint as a seclusion and restraint technique. Technically, a student that is in an assisted chair that might have a physical disability is in a mechanical restraint, but it's not to restrain them, it's to support them, but we don't use mechanical restraint as far as discipline is concerned. And these are really, anytime a seclusion or restraint is used, we train our staff to do that, of course, as a last resort, but only when there is danger of, or imminent danger of self-harm or harm to others.
And you try absolutely to find the people that are the experts in this area before you allow people, these other staff members to touch a child in such a way?
Yes, our training process in the district is you utilize one of the trained team members, it's not up for anybody just to utilize seclusion or restraint on their own.
And do we have seclusion rooms?
We do.
How many do we have?
I wouldn't have that number right offhand, not every school has them, but most do.
And how often are they used?
I wouldn't be able to answer that for you either, we do keep a record of the uses of the seclusion rooms though.
Yeah, I'm going to look at that more.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm just, I, see, this is, this is something that I would like, that I'd like to look more into, because as I said, this is the only district I've ever worked in that used seclusion rooms, except in certain conditions where you had exceptional children identified as needed.
Well, I think in this case, though, this is the policy around seclusion and restraint in schools, and those are questions that would be good for Policy Committee meetings, not necessarily here with the Board, so.
Well, it's a. Ms. Justice, if you would like to vote separately on this policy, I can absolutely have all the other policies adopted and then pull this out separately for a separate vote.
Uh, Ms. Varnum, I've kind of burned, I've straightened out some of my information, the information I wanted, mainly about who's doing it and, you know, under what conditions, you know, the way it says.
You could suggest if you read forty-three oh two and then make markups, then we know exactly what you're having questions about.
Right, well, she was very helpful, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the four thousand series as posted on the agenda. Is there any additional, well, I think we've had enough discussion. All those in favor, say.
But did that motion include taking off forty-three?
We had to do that separately.
Okay.
But it did include the amendment.
The answer, she got her answers.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, she's, I thought you meant the others.
She said she got her answers, didn't she?
Yeah, I got my answers.
But, but it should include the amendments to forty-three hundred and forty-three fifty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we need to amend the motion to add the verbiage that Ms. Crable shared into forty-three hundred.
And forty-three fifty-one.
And forty-three fifty-one.
That was my motion.
The motion included that.
That was my motion.
So that is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilderbohr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, policies, four thousand series is approved, now I'm going to make sure not to forget this, Ms. Stagner, I know you're looking at me, we are going, we need to rescind the policies from one thousand down, the ones listed at the bottom of the agenda, it goes through ninety-six hundred, because these are, with the updates, we no longer need to keep these on the policies. So is there a motion to rescind?
So do.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, with a second, any discussion about rescinded policies? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, policies are rescinded. Next item on the agenda for old business is policy revision twenty-three thirty, board meeting agenda, and I will give this also again to Mr. Bullier.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. This changes the format of our agenda to allow for consensus items to be moved up right after call to the audience, these would include old business and new business, so for instance, our discussion tonight about calendars would probably be something we keep out of the consent agenda since it's information that the public has a lot of concern about or interest in, but budget amendments, procurement plan for child nutrition, et cetera, et cetera, would be placed into a consent agenda item to be passed quickly after call to the audience, this is a way to speed up our times. Also, there will be two call to the audiences under this adopted agenda format. Call to the audience based on non-agenda items will be moved until after correspondence, right before the end of the meeting, this is consistent with other governmental bodies within New Hanover County.
Right, so call to the audience, the first call to the audience, the beginning of the meeting, would be agenda items that we are voting on, so that the community would have the opportunity to share their thoughts prior to the vote, and then if it's something that is not related to the things that are on the agenda for that evening, they will be moved to the end of the meeting.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
I would like to discuss, I understand that part of it, because I feel like if we're limiting to sixty minutes anyway, I mean, unless there's big controversial things on the agenda, I don't see why we couldn't just order the things that are agenda first, instead of waiting, making people wait all the way to the end of the meeting for their chance to speak.
I guess my answer to that would be that our staff is sitting here at nine forty-eight, and so if there's any way we can get them out of here a bit early, they don't have to stay for the second call to the audience. And they will, you know, when we free them up after this consent agenda, perhaps Mr. Anderson won't need to be here, perhaps Hazel has something that consent agenda, and they can get on with their evenings rather than being stuck here.
That's not.
I appreciate that, because I've been trying to get that done.
And that's one of the things that we will be doing when we're looking at the new format and the agenda, because it is really rough in general for everybody. On the other hand, if we can set the meetings up in such a way that that wouldn't even have to be a consideration anymore, that would help an awful lot, you know, know that the meetings would end at eight or nine, instead of ending every night at, well, whatever.
Again, I would just add that this is in keeping with other governmental bodies within the county system, so, I mean.
So we're not considering a work session, which is open to the public, and then a regular board meeting session?
That's what we're considering.
At the same.
The ad hoc committee is still discussing those options, but this is for our current policy for the agenda as it stands now. So the recommendation is for Board approval with these edits from the Policy Committee, is there a motion?
Moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bullier, thanks to Ms. Crable for a second, thank you very much, any other additional discussion?
I still don't understand this call to audience agenda, I just worry that, I mean, unless we change the format of our meetings and make them shorter, this is going to end up making people stay here for hours perhaps.
Well, that's part of what we're doing, and, and.
I just feel like that's coming, this is coming before this even happened yet.
Well, and that's why I was a little, you know, I was wondering why we didn't wait until after we had more at this point.
Tonight was less than sixty minutes, I believe, and included both agenda and non-agenda items, and, I don't know, I guess I just worry, I mean, I know we were talking about staff and everything, but we haven't had a chance to really even discuss this and the implications of it, I guess that's what we're doing.
Well, and as I said, I was, I was a little wondering why this, because we know, I know we talked about it during our ad hoc committee meeting, that we were going to be changing everything in many ways.
Anything that came out of the committee meeting would have to have a consent agenda, so we wanted to put it in there.
Yeah, and the consent agenda, that's the one thing that we were agreeing on, I have no problem.
That's the only thing that I feel like I have an issue with, I mean, it's just, the call to audience is such an important part of it at the beginning, and I feel like throwing things to the end like that, it just, I think it's going to put people out that come.
Well, there's still the call to the audience, it's just.
I get it, you've got agenda items here. Well, what do we have, like, two things that's on the agenda, or three things to discuss, but then there's like, three people that want to have to stay all the way to the end, I mean, if we've got sixty minutes, why can't we just use that sixty minutes, or however much sixty minutes we have?
But sixty minutes is only our limit, it's, we don't have to go sixty minutes.
Well, right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, then we don't have to have the second one, if we have everybody to speak at the beginning. I guess I'm just, maybe I'm not understanding it.
I think what we can do is, if that is the case, if there's five people and two have non-agenda items, I'm pretty sure, and Ms. Stagner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure we could make a motion to move the non-agenda items up to the regular call to the audience.
Yes, when you approve your agenda, you could make any changes at that time.
Well, I can say, as long as that's okay with you guys, and we're not like, making people wait all the way to the end.
I don't have any problem with that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
So what are we changing?
We're not changing anything, we're still voting on, we're voting on the recommendation as presented. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. New agenda, or board meeting agenda policy twenty-three thirty is approved. All right, next item on the agenda, superintendent evaluation instrument, so I know we've been talking about this for the last couple months, and last month I asked for an extension on this discussion because we needed to gather additional information. The backstory is that New Hanover County Schools has been utilizing an in-house superintendent evaluation instrument for an extended period of time, there is a state tool that is available to us that aligns with the evaluation tool that are utilized with Central Office, principals and teachers, and it is around the North Carolina standards. And the discussion for tonight is to decide if our Board believes that we would like to use the in-house superintendent evaluation or the state tool. I've spoken with a representative at DPI, they are currently, the question was, we didn't know if we had to do training, and there is no mandated training for districts, but there is a training that is being created right now, the video will be available April first, and DPI has offered that after we have had an opportunity to view that training, they would come to a work session and we could ask as many questions as we like to learn about the standards, to learn about the process, and so, open the Board for discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, you know, make the recommendation, we use the state instrument, I think it has a lot more to it, it's, there's just so much more depth in it, it gives us a lot more abilities to describe exactly what we think is going on, so I think that that's just a much better tool.
I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Wilderbohr.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
All right, that is a motion, is there a second? All right, Ms. Justice, we have a second, any additional discussion?
Just one question, Madam Chair, is our policy still in keeping with a timeline of May for the superintendent evaluation, and do we need to go ahead and amend that in our next meeting?
Could you move closer to your microphone?
I'm sorry. Yeah, is our policy still in keeping with, I believe our policy still stipulates a May timeline for the superintendent's evaluation, so I'll just say we need to go ahead and get that, I think we're going to need to change that to a different timeline.
I will let Ms. Stagner weigh in on that conversation.
I agree that you will need to either waive or amend the policy on the superintendent evaluation timeline, because there are steps as far as a self-evaluation and then the Board's evaluation, so those things, I wouldn't imagine can be done by May. So one option would be to have that policy at the Policy Committee meeting and move that out of order to go ahead and get that in place.
That'd be fun, that'd be great.
And just one other item, I believe, Dr. Faust, your contract allows you to weigh in on this discussion as well, and so I'd like to know what are your thoughts on this tool versus our in-house tool?
So I would definitely ask, will highly recommend that in order to use the state when everyone has to be trained on how to use this one, because it's just not a checkbox, there's artifacts that take place, and it's rather extensive versus the one that the Board has used in the past, so, yeah, I definitely, if we're going to do it, then we've got to give the, and I'll say the equitable side, that you can't just jump to this more difficult one, where in the past you used a really blanket, easy one that was used, so I definitely want us to sit down and talk about and look at the goals and make sure that we as a unit understand what the goals are.
And that aligns the conversation that I had with Dr. Simmons at DPI, you know, she said this really should be a partnership, especially in the beginning, because it is new to us, and it's going to be extensive, and so, you know, with Dr. Faust doing the self-evaluation, then sitting down as a group to go through it together, to move through it, so I think that's great. So we have a motion and a second.
Well, and I'd like to add this too, luckily, there's several of us on here that's worked with a similar instrument, and in the past have been trained on it, and I'm more than happy to be trained on this one too, but that just, that's going to help when we go through the process, so it's not unknown to quite a few of us here.
Yeah, that other one isn't a lot, I mean.
We're not, I'm not talking about the other one.
It's outdated, so we'll definitely, it's, I promise you it's different.
And there's no room for comments, so you can explain why you just pulled a number out.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion and a second to select the North Carolina State Superintendent Evaluation Tool, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, new tool has been adopted, thank you very much. New business, twenty-two, twenty-two school calendars, Dr. Smith, people are very excited to find out these dates.
Yes, good evening, again to all of you, it is my pleasure to bring before you the recommendation of the School Calendar Committee for the adoption of the twenty-two one, excuse me, twenty-two one, twenty-two school calendars. As you know, the district has seven calendars that we bring before the Board typically annually, and I'll just highlight these, and then I'll give a little space and place for Mr. Bullier to share as well. The traditional school calendar will begin on August twenty-third, it opens the year with nine teacher workdays, we've talked quite a bit about the need for teacher training, this definitely makes that opportunity available to teachers. I will also say that these calendars are not with, they're definitely not perfect, so there aren't, so they're not without some sacrifices. It was very much prioritized that we would end the first semester prior to going home for the winter break, so with that, we tried to get as many student days as we could prior to leaving in December for the winter break. That causes an imbalance in our semesters, but our teachers and our members of our committee were well aware of that. We also, with our traditional calendar, will be able to end that first year, or the school year, prior to the Memorial Day holiday. The calendar consists of twenty-three teacher workdays, this is probably more teacher workdays than we've ever had, and again, it provides that opportunity for teacher training, we want our teachers to have the opportunity to develop their skillset, to build out their toolkit, so that they're in the best position they can to meet the needs of our students, however they present themselves. And so this calendar definitely takes that into account. And so, this calendar definitely takes that into account. With our year-round calendar, we start the year, school year for students, on July fourteenth, and we end on June ninth. That very much mirrors that calendar as it was prior to COVID-19. With restart, again, we have two schools that have that flexibility within our district. They begin on August third, they end on June ninth, and then we have the calendar for Isaac Barrett Early College High School, begins on August third, ends on May eighteen, and then we have the calendars for WEX and CTEC, and they begin on August fifth and end on May twentieth. Happy to answer any questions that you have, and definitely, Mr. Bullier, any comments that you'd like to share?
Dr. Smith, I've done this three years now, and if there's one thing I've learned serving with you and your wonderful team on the calendar committee, it's that time is valuable and precious, and in that vein, I will withhold any further comment, just add my thanks.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by members of the board?
I can't believe we have so many calendars, but, I mean, I know we need them.
We used to have nine.
I know, I know, this is like tearing it down.
We can consolidate it.
Yes.
Yes, it's gotten better.
So, you've heard the recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two School Calendars. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, second, with Mr. Wildebohr. Any other discussion? Thank you for your work, Dr. Smith and Calendar Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, calendars are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda are the budget amendments. Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm presenting three amendments, state, general fund, and other restricted revenue fund. The state revisions include, well, net to a decrease of one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, along with transfers that are between several different purposes for the coronavirus relief fund grants. We had an opportunity to transfer some funds to make sure that we avoided reversion and to use all those dollars, because during that period of time, they kept changing the rules on what we could use it for, so we, we tried to make sure those dollars were maximized. Also, general fund was just a net increase of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars, which was a combination of a carrier correction and FEMA proceeds, the hurricane earlier in the year, and then also had transfers, which were pretty substantial, of over a million dollars with the, which resulted from a redistribution of our county appropriation, because our enrollment went down, charters went up, so we had to kind of realign that budget. And then, finally, we received a fifteen thousand dollar donation from Duke Energy Giving Foundation for student iPads. Any questions?
Any discussion from board members or questions?
You said charters went up. Charters went up.
Yes, charters went up, not as much as we went down, but they, I can't remember the exact number, but they went up over three hundred and fifty students, I think, and we went down over a thousand students, so, the redistribution of county funding had to be done, I should have done earlier, but we got to it. But we have been appropriating funds to them during the year at appropriate level.
So, the recommendation is for the budget amendments submitted to be approved. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, budget amendments are approved. Thank you. Next up, procurement plan for child nutrition program, Mr. Eddie Anderson.
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of a updated procurement plan for child nutrition. This was initiated by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction in our child nutrition audit. Summary of the revisions is on the first page, and, as I said, tonight, we ask for your approval.
All right, you have heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bullier, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, procurement plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you're not going anywhere, so I guess you're, you've got the next item, too, don't you? All right, Waterstone Drive dedication of right-of-way, Mr. Eddie Anderson.
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking for the board to approve a right-of-way dedication along Waterstone Drive, adjacent to Porter's Neck Elementary School. This dedication will allow the State Department of Public Transportation to accept the road into the state system and assume maintenance responsibilities.
Salute.
All right, you, we have a motion to approve, Mr. McManus? Yes, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Justice, thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Yeah, well, yeah, looking at Porter's Neck, where exactly is this road? I'm curious, because.
Sure.
Over there.
Porter's Neck was actually constructed before, started construction before Waterstone, so if you're facing Porter's Neck with your back to Edgewater, it's on the right-hand side, and so, that road, the school system built over an easement that was part of our purchase agreement.
Okay.
So, that road does serve both Waterstone and the school system. We built that road in CDOT standards, so that at the end of the warranty period, it could be dedicated.
Okay, well, thank you, I was picturing it.
All right, so we have a first and a second, we've had discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, recommendation is approved. Thank you, sir. Next up, memorandum of understanding with New Hanover County Community Justice Services Department, Ms. Julie Barnum.
Thank you, and I also want to recognize Director Chris Preston, who's been with us all evening.
Thank you for having me.
Waiting for, waiting for, for our MOU to be discussed.
And I also see our Assistant County Manager, Tefana Bradley.
Miss Tefana Bradley is well.
Bless my heart, dear.
For being here, that's commitment, right? So, this MOU outlines our relationship with Community Justice Services. They provide an array of clinical prevention and intervention programs and services targeted at preventing and reducing crime for at-risk, diverted and offender populations within our school system and within the county. And specifically, we're working with them on youth empowerment services team, who serve that population of students who are at-risk, delinquent, or adjudicated, and we work with them in referring, but also want them to be able to support our students one-on-one within our school setting, and then also provide prevention programs within our school.
All right, so, thank you very much. You, your recommendations for approval, correct?
Thank you, yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the, okay.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the first, sorry? Mr. Wildebohr? All right, Mr. Wildebohr with a second, from Mr. Bullier, is there any discussion? We appreciate the partnership, and thank you very much for the services provided for our students in our district. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You are partners with the county, thank you.
All right, next item, memorandum of understanding with Coastal Horizons.
And you see a lot of MOUs we have with Coastal Horizons. This one is coming, maybe at an odd time of the year, but we will get this on a different cycle. This MOU outlines our relationship with Coastal Horizons for the provision of our day treatment services that occur on the campus of Lake Forest, which is right here behind you, for students in kindergarten through eighth grade. This is a service that we've been providing for quite some time, we're just fine-tuning our MOU with more up-to-date standards per our relationship with Tharrington Smith.
All right, so you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, any discussion? All right, we appreciate our partnerships with Coastal Horizons as well. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? MOU is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, final agenda on new business is the April regular board meeting. So, our April regular board meeting is currently scheduled during the week of spring break, when many of our educators, staff will possibly be taking a well-deserved break, so, it has been suggested, and we've done this in previous years, of moving the board meeting one week to schedule it for Tuesday, April thirteenth. So, that is the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I think she had it first.
Ms. Judy Justice with the motion and with the second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Wildebohr, any discussion?
Sounds good.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, April board meeting has been moved until Tuesday, April thirteenth, thank you very much. Next item is correspondence. Does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share this evening?
Just like to tell my wife that I will probably be home before she gets to sleep tonight.
I got a lot of questions.
All right, next item on the agenda, announcements. The following are upcoming meetings in which board members are participating. Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee meeting on Monday, March first, at 5:00 p.m., and Monday, March fifteenth, at 5:00 p.m.
Madam Chair?
I guess.
I think we've struck the second meeting in the DI committee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bowie, if you could note that, please, in our announcements, thank you. The board has a work session scheduled for Friday, March fifth, at 10:00 a.m. Policy Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March ninth, at 9:00 a.m. Joint meeting with the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners will be held on Wednesday, March tenth, at 4:00 p.m. Board master training will be held on Friday, March twelfth, at 11:00 a.m. Title IX Committee meeting will be on Monday, March fifteenth, at 3:00 p.m., and our interim board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March sixteenth, at 5:30 p.m. I do not believe that we have any need for a closed session.
Did you want to mention, we've already said it once tonight, that the ad hoc committee that Ms. Justice is on March the tenth at eleven?
All right, March tenth at eleven is going to be the ad hoc committee for the board processes.
And, Madam Chairman, I'll be a part of the Parks and Rec Committee meeting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m.
Oh, fantastic, can't wait to hear about it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's another reason to change these late meetings.
That's right.